So it just doesn't bend so much?
So that it's to try to help me do this. It tends to go like that.
Oh, it wants to go in the right direction.
Wants to go that way, so the tape is...
Make you go in the right direction.
Helping supposedly.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this session of the Planning Commission Wednesday, April 27th. Welcome. I'd like to first start by saying that all of the planning commissioners the president accounted for, with the exception of Commissioner Blake Stedman, who is absent and excused. Tonight, we'll be talking, we'll be opening a public hearing to discuss the, continue the hearing for the Nike Hill Plan and Code amendments, including amendments regarding the affordable housing. So we've got some people from, from Arch here to talk about affordable housing. Are there any non-agenda public comments at this time? Seeing none, I'll move on. We, approval of minutes, we've got three sets of minutes to approve. Any comments on these at all, Dave, or?
None.
No, none. I can't see you guys over there.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd, 2016, March 2nd, 2016, and March 9th, 2016.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any, any new business?
None.
We'll move right into the public hearing then and open the public hearing regarding Nike Hill Plan and Code amendments.
So someone just stepped in. Do you want to open that back up, the opportunity for non-agenda?
Sure, yeah. Miss, since you just got here, we just got past non-agenda public comments. If you have anything that, to talk about that's not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, thank you. We're opening the continued public hearing regarding the Nike Hill Plan and Code amendments, including code amendments regarding affordable housing. All right, let's, Bruce, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairs and Commissioner Members and members of the audience. Of course, tonight, you're going to get a little bit of a brief presentation from staff, accept final public testimony, potentially close the public hearing on the Shelton View, Meridian, Third Southeast, and Queensborough, Brentwood, Crystal Springs, also known as the Nike Hill Plan and Code Amendments. Hopefully, you can have a chance to deliberate motion and vote upon the code amendments, deliberate motion and vote upon the affordable housing provision, which we're going to be introducing to you a little bit later on this evening. And of course, make a deliberation and motion upon the Nike Hill Affordable Housing Provisions, and then we're thinking maybe have a little bit of a break. And, well, let me, let me go into this one. Maybe have a little bit of a break, because I know council member, I'm sorry, commission member Clark has been recusing himself from the Nike Hill, not the Nike Hill, the South Riverside Drive, and then continue the affordable housing provision so that, so we can get into kind of that mode of having that, continue to have that separation. And basically, the concept would be to have the last public hearing tonight on the Shelton View Nike Hill provisions. It's, it's probably one of those things where it's a good time to wrap it up and go on to our next fun endeavors. So, of course, within your packet, you've got draft planning commission findings for Nike Hill. You've got draft subarea plan regulations as well, as well as draft subarea plans. Now, one of the things I want to identify was that Commissioner Clark identified to us that we had a duplicate for the Queensborough packet in there that was dated from a previous meeting, that was the second of March, that accidentally got inserted into your packet. Ignore that. The only thing you want to look at is things that are dated for 4/27/16. So in case you looked at those, you know, just kind of ignore that, that little section that was just added by accident.
Bruce, could...
Yes, indeed.
Could you just clarify which, which one that is, there's maybe...
Yes.
Because they were different. They were, and I want to make sure everybody has the right one in their packet.
Yes, indeed.
You've got one that's dated 3/2/16, is that the one?
That's the one to not look at, yes.
Okay.
That is the one to ignore. That's the one that was, and it was from a previous meeting that just got inserted in by, by accident through electronic files. We're not sure how it happened, but it did, so. But the rest of them should all say 4/27 on them, and those should be the ones that you review.
Okay, Commissioners, everybody clear on that? It's, it's toward the end of the packet labeled QB1, and it's just before the draft planning commission recommended affordable housing code amendments. I take that back, it's just before the, there's, it starts on page one, ends on page QB10, and it's just before Exhibit B.
Yeah, there you go.
Everybody on board? Thanks, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, you bet. And essentially, what we want to talk about quite a bit tonight about is the affordable housing provisions for these provisions. Now, we have Arthur Sullivan with Arch, who is here, as well as Dave Boyt, who can kind of go through that. They've got a little bit more background than I do. But you're going to notice there's a couple of things. One is that there's a new chapter proposed, 12.07, which would become the city's administrative provisions, which would conclude definitions, common terms, and provisions that would be applicable to virtually all affordable housing activities, not all, but virtually all. And of course, within Nike Hill and South Riverside is where you have the detail about what area, you know, the specific zones that are basically the subject of these two up zones, would be required to have the affordable housing component provided for, as well as that there's some discussion about fee and lieu that we'll have a little bit more discussion here, a little bit more in detail about then. So, I kind of covered that. I think at that point, I'll stop at this point and identify if there's any questions, any of the commission members have on the draft findings for Nike Hill, or the subarea language, or the implementing regulations. We'll kind of get those started, and then we'll turn it over to Arthur and Dave to kind of cover some of the affordable housing provisions as well.
So, Bruce, just to clarify, we, let's, let all the Commissioners have a chance here, the, what you're asking us for commentary on right now is just the, one, pages one through 31, and not the exhibits, or are we looking for everything at this time?
Well, anything that's within the findings. So the idea behind that is that if you see something that, well, for example, if you, if you look through the exhibit list and you say, hey, wait a minute, I thought we had something from this individual, let me know about that, and I can make sure and, and look for that and make sure I didn't, I, we can find that. As you identified, there were 41 in your packet, and we just received one yesterday, so I'm going to add it, it's going to become 42, and it's from Mr. Aaron Feek, which I'm going to go and grab it and give it to you right now, if that's all right.
Sure.
All right. As the Commissioner will recall, Mr. Feek owns a piece of property on the east side of Meridian Avenue, and he has submitted exhibits before, asking to have that area zoned R4000. The planning commission's recommendation so far is to keep it at R50200A as the highest density, but Mr. Feek just wanted to provide this exhibit to you to make sure that you understood what his individual desires are. So from that standpoint, I would open it up to any commission questions you might have, and then perhaps turn it over to public testimony.
So, Bruce, I, I have a feeling, I mean, there's a lot of material between the findings and Exhibit A and B. I have a feeling there probably are going to be some comments. I want to make a couple of comments first concerning my, my recusal. I intend to stay in the public hearing until we get to the very end, which will be the South Riverside Drive items, and so I, that'll include discussions about affordable housing as they relate to, to Nike Hill, as well as the general provisions for the, for the code and the comprehensive plan. So I, I will recuse myself at that time, and I think at that time, we will have to take a vote on who should be my replacement, since Blake is not here, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Basically, in the absence of any of the officers, and that's the be of the case, the commission members who are remaining will elect their own chair to run the rest of the meeting.
Okay, so, and we can decide at that time, just before that, if it's appropriate to take a break, or just push through, depending on how long this takes. Couple of comments, just, what I, I'm kind of curious to know what the rest of the commission thinks about going through this. Everybody, except for the, the two newest Commissioners, we've spent a lot of time, not just on the affordable housing stuff, but on, on the Nike Hill. We've been through, we've made draft recommendations, we're here to review those draft recommendations tonight, and obviously, the new information we received from Mr. Feek. What I would, I'm, what I'm hoping we're doing is just reviewing what we've already done to make sure that we, nobody's changed their mind, or that this, this new exhibit doesn't change anybody's mind, and then have kind of general comments about that, and then maybe it's worthwhile just to go through this quickly, like we always do, on a kind of a, a page-by-page basis, just to make sure that there's nothing missing. I'll assume that, Bruce, that you are going to pick up any, any type of graphic or grammatical errors in the text, so we're not, we're not here to go through and, and do that, I don't think.
Yes, actually, kind of embarrassingly, I found a couple even yesterday, so I'm going to do that. I always do that, that's one of our natural activities.
No, no problem. So, I guess, I, I know I have some comments, some general comments, but I'll just defer to anybody else. Is there anybody that would like to go first on this?
I just have one quick question. On, on page 22 and 23 of the memo, table seven and eight? So it shows the, the total trips in table seven under existing zoning as 2344, but in table eight, it shows the total existing trips is 4452. Can you clarify what, what the difference is?
Huh, I think that's just a typo. I think the, the numbers are correct. It's just a typo, it's, it's 4452, I think it's supposed to be 2344. So what I can do is I can, I can check with our transportation folks on that, too.
Can I make just a general follow-up comment? I went through these tables, too, pretty, pretty hard, and they're, just seems to be, I don't know if stuff got changed at times and it didn't follow through the table, but the numbers are pretty jumbled, and, and I couldn't, I was going to start asking you questions and that, but I think one error may be carried through, and so maybe it just needs a refresh, Bruce?
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I can, I, I have no problem at all taking another look at that.
On table eight, I think all your totals omitted the detached single-family trips, and so that's kind of messed up some of the totals and the total PC recommendation row.
Yeah, I sure did.
But whether or not that's, you know, maybe there's a preceding omission or something that, that has more effect, so maybe just a refresh on that, and I don't know if you can send that back out to us?
I can.
To look at? Yeah, that'd probably be good.
I'm going to assume there were no changes to the data that we saw previously on this, Bruce, is that correct?
It's generally the same, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. We did update a couple of things, because what happened was that the trips actually are in a negative, as well as a positive situation, because we're switching land uses.
Okay.
And the new land uses, even though there's more, the total trip is, is a different generation rate, so. But I'll make sure and go through that with a fine-tooth comb and, and make sure our transportation folks are hunky-dory with what I do.
Okay. And I, I'm going to apologize in advance for interrupting you, Jason. I, I think we probably should, at this point, take public comment first, if there is any public comments, so that is where, so we can factor that in, as we're having our, making our comments. So I'm going to back up a step and open it up to public comment quickly. Does any, are there any public comments on this, on this particular issue at this time?
You want to maybe refresh what the issue is for these folks?
Sure, we're here to, right now, we're discussing the proposed planning commission findings, conclusion, and recommendations for the code update for Shelton View, Third, Meridian, and Queensborough, Brentwood, Crystal Springs, Subareas, and Bothell Municipal Code. Collectively, we're calling it the Nike Hill Comprehensive Plan Amendments, which include some rezones, redesignations, and implementation of an affordable housing element into this, into the, the comprehensive plan. So, are there any, any comments at all at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll let you go, start up again, Jason.
Okay, I just have one more. On SV10, in the red highlighted text, or underlined text, let me know when you're ready.
Yep.
Yes.
It, it says, it reads, pursue acquisition of the two DNR parcels, but earlier in the memo, it says on page 24, that the Parks Board and the Council recommended against that, so I'm just curious if, is that language that should be left in there? I'm catching up, so, sorry.
Is it on the preceding page, or in the memo, random?
On page 24 of the memo. It reads, however, if the Parks Board, oh, how, apologies.
Jason, what we, what we kind of decided on that was that we were going to make that recommendation, if they, if it wasn't supported, that we would go ahead with a, with a comp plan designation that would overlay that, so I think that, that's why it reads that way. It is a little bit, I think it's a little bit hard to understand in that context, but is that correct, Bruce?
Yeah, in fact, you know, the, the preceding sentence identifies that the planning commission supports the acquisition of those two items, and it's the however that maybe, maybe as cousin is the problems, because what will happen is that whenever the city looks at acquiring a piece of property, there's always a financial aspect, and well, as a competing interest, basically, we will have a lot of those type of requests coming in on different properties, and that discussion will be held with the Parks Board and the City Council. And it's possible the City Council could say, look, we don't think we should buy the DNR2 property, and that's kind of the one that I think that has the most potential for maybe not being acquired. And if that's the case, the planning commission's recommendation is assign these zoning classifications, because it makes the most sense from a planning standpoint.
All right, that's not my question, thanks.
Okay, who, any, thanks?
Can I have a follow-up question? So can you walk us through the timeline of, I guess, memorializing the change in zoning for DNR2 property versus when the city mayor may not be able to come up with the money? I, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, making it a more expensive property, if that is something that they actually want to pursue.
Well, here's the thing about it, the planning commission, first of all, the planning commission is just a recommendation. It's the legislative body, the City Council, that makes the decision on the zoning classifications. Secondly, what will happen here is that in the coming months, we are hoping that the Park Board and the City Council will have the opportunity to spend some time about the acquisition potentials. They, they, the Parks Board certainly knows about the DNR2 parcel, the City Council knows about the DNR2 parcel as a possible acquisition, and they will have that discussion, as we do a lot of other things, as, as you're aware, we'll have Wayne Golf Course that's in potential acquisition, as well as the MC Coast property, and, and the Parks Director will be kind of taking this whole big packet and starting to create some kind of a logical sequence on how to determine which properties are feasible for acquisition, and that'll be a discussion that will happen during the course of this year.
So, let's say they decide that it is worth pursuing, would it stay at 9,600 for the foreseeable future?
To be honest with you, it probably would, yes.
Hard to say.
That, that's different, I think, than what we previously discussed. Are we, are we not going to, the recommendation to, to change it to R4000 would not, oh, I'm sorry, are you talking about the, the DNR1 or 2?
2, the sliver.
Yeah, I, I thought that if, if, in the event that the Parks Board opted not to pursue that, that it would...
Exactly, yes.
The recommendation would carry forward this year.
Yes, however, if there, if the course of the year is decided by the city that not to acquire it, then you'd basically be looking at the, implementing the planning commission recommendation. Well, that would be considered by the City Council.
Would not require additional action by us, so that would automatically take effect?
Correct, nope. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. So I think, Pat, your question is, process-wise, when would we anticipate having a decision on that particular parcel, and how does that affect or not affect the plan amendment process?
Right.
Is there, is there an anticipation, timing-wise, of either of those events?
You know, I, I don't, primarily because this is going to be taken by another department and another forum, potentially. I do know that this topic is very time-sensitive, and I do know that there has been a lot of discussion about what to do, particularly with all the properties that are being identified now. So, I suspect, and again, I, again, I can't guarantee it, but I suspect this is going to be a discussion that's held this year.
So, Bruce, it might, considering the number, you know, the number of questions we have about that, would it be possible to add some language into this that talks about, in a little bit more detail, how, how that's going to happen? I, I guess, I'm concerned that it just might get inadvertently swept under the rug or something, if, if, if the Parks Board doesn't take action. I think it is important that, that backup plan, I think, is actually pretty important, if it isn't, if it is not viable as parkland. I don't know how you can maybe add a little more detail, or maybe put a tentative timing of when the Parks Board typically would be considering that, or...
Well, actually, I think it's, it's okay to actually have a discussion about the process that we anticipate occurring during the course of this year. So, I can get with the Parks Director and have a little bit of more of a detailed discussion about what that process may be, and then I can bring that back to the commission, so you can see kind of what their thought processes are on this.
Okay, that'd be great. That's it. Anybody else?
Are you looking for comments through the whole?
Well, we're going to go through it page by page, but if you have kind of bigger, bigger things, and I think, general things, then we can do it. I'll let you decide whether it's page by page or more general. Go ahead.
One other general comment, I think I brought this up before, I don't want to go backwards, but are we still positive the RAC, OP, and B makes the most sense? So, looking at the whole city, seems like we've got that designation by the college and down the street where the old Albertsons used to be, is that correct?
Yes.
I guess if you could talk a little bit more about the flexibility of the NBOP over, RAC, over just the neighborhood business designation, and why that fits here?
Right, well, and I think maybe we can kind of look at the actual comp plan itself, because right now, the comp plan calls for an activity center in this neighbor, in this, basically around this intersection area. And I think what that activity center was initially going to be, was a little bit larger than what has been through the course of this process that we were going to identify. There was talk about maybe extending the activity center into the Army FEMA site, and maybe some a little bit more further to east, but during the course of our discussion, what has happened is that that center has gotten into a, a fairly small, compact area. And activity centers are important, and this one is a neighborhood activity center, it's not one of our big regional activity centers, like what you have down in the Canyon Park area. And it's intended basically to provide just a little bit of mixed use here, so you have a little bit of retail service-type uses here, as well as a little bit more multifamily residential, just to add a little node into this natural area. This is where two pretty main roadways connect, and right now, of course, most of the zoning on the east side is detached single-family housing. And, you know, we've had a discussion about, okay, is that really a logical place to have in this particular intersection? So that's kind of the process this has been gone through, from the standpoint of, okay, what is the most appropriate thing that I apply here? The RAC is probably our most flexible zoning classification, if you would, simply from the standpoint that there's not a set number of dwelling units that has to be there. What happens is that based upon the bulk dimensional scale parking provisions, and how the site lays out, is where the number of dwelling units come in. And that means that a developer could do, you know, three-bedroom units, or efficiency units, or any of those type of things, depending upon what is most desirable in this location. So that's one of the things that's a good advantage about the A-RAC, because the A-activity center is really intended to be a small, walkable neighborhood area.
Bruce, is, is residential required in the RACs?
Well, in fact, well, in fact, one of the provisions that you have assigned is that you think that residential should be required, so that we really do get that mixture of uses that was really important that we attain in this activity center. And basically, the idea behind it is that the first floor could be offices, retail, or a thing like that. The second and third floors, if there are any, would have to be at least 50% of residential component. So what you've done by that action is you have actually required the future development, if it goes again, more than one story, to be as a mixed use.
Sure, yeah.
Is this the section that I was seeing, that its maximum height can be 35 feet?
Exactly.
Unless if there's parking, and then it can go up to 65 feet?
No, in fact, one of the things that the commission, in an earlier discussion, decided that in this location, the 35-foot maximum height was it, period.
Okay.
Not the option to go higher. And that's in other locations within the RAC. In fact, that's one of the unique things about this particular RAC, is because we are capitated at 35 feet, or approximately three levels.
Regardless if there's parking or not?
Exactly, exactly, yes. That was a really important visual thing that the commission discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I, I have a couple of things, looking through this and kind of reflecting back on what we did before, there are a couple of things that popped up that I hadn't really thought of before. The, where we're putting a second provision, I'm on page 25 of the body of the, of the recommendation, says the second, at the very last paragraph, says, "The second provision is to require a minimum amount of ground floor retail and a minimum amount of upper-floor residential suites. Commissions finds it is appropriate to ensure that future development include a mixture of uses to attain the objectives of providing both employment and housing within these activity centers." Does the, does the underlying zoning not already address that in terms of those percentages? I, I'm wondering why we're specifically pointing that out in this particular area, as opposed to allowing the underlying code to just dictate that. And Mike, I'll tell you what my concern is, I'm, I'm concerned about not allowing flexibility and how, let the market determine what ought to be there, and, and so I'm just curious to know your thoughts on that.
Interestingly enough, one of the provisions in our code is that when you have these multiple zoning classifications, basically group zoning classifications, the code is very clear that says, "A property owner or developer can take advantage of any of those individual zoning classifications." An example here is OP. So if you want to have an OP designation, and they go, well, I'm going to put a big office building here, that's the only use you would get. And that was where, when the commission was talking about this, and they said, look, we really do want to have this, this neighborhood activity center, that was the whole point, well, not the whole point, one of the major point, features of this area, was to make sure that we do get that mixture of uses. So what that does is, by making those requirements here, you avoid the potential of somebody just putting in a single-type-use building, or activity, or something like that.
Does that effectively eliminate some of those options? I mean, OP, does, if, if you're required to have a certain amount of residential in it, is, does it eliminate the need to even have it, have that OP portion?
Well, in, in some ways, it does restrict, restrict that. In fact, it puts a more owner's restriction than the ordinary, just a single drooping of those type uses. In other words, because now what will happen is that if you have an office, the entire first floor is fine, but 50% of the second floor has to be residential, and so you are placing a restriction here that's not available to other locations.
So that, so those requirements for our, our retail on the bottom floor, and then partial residential on the second floor, those only apply to, to an RAC?
Only applies to this RAC.
To this RAC?
Yes.
But, so that would not apply if they said, I'm going to do an OP project?
It would, it would. Basically, what happened is if they just want to do office professional, office professional of the entire first floor is not a problem, but when you get to the second level and third levels, they would have to have at least 50% of that floor area to be residential.
But is that allowed in the office professional zone? I mean, if you decide, I want to take advantage of the office professional zone, the port, the portion of this, you know, you know, all the possibilities, are you eliminating your ability to do residential, or can you say, I'm going to do office professional for the first floor and residential for the second floor? I, I'm just wondering if...
You are, you are eliminating the possibility of having two floors of office professional. So what will happen is that the first floor office professional, normal, you know, standard basic provisions. The second floor is where you'd have the difference.
So you could effectively have two different zones in the same, take advantage of two different zones in the same, same building, is that correct?
And that's the way it is throughout the city, where we have these multiple provisions. We do have a lot of mixed uses, uses throughout, throughout the city where we have the RAC. Usually, it's in conjunction with another designation.
Okay, and then the, this, the details, the specifics about that get explicitly defined in the, in the code, in the, in the...
Yes, in the implementing regulations, you bet.
Okay. Let's see, second thing, the, getting back to that issue of there being two different versions of, of the Queensborough, Brentwood, Crystal Springs, Subarea Plan, I'm wondering if we have, if we kept the right one, because I look at the, when I look at the comp plan, if you look at the one for Shelton View, it talks, it has a section in it that discusses, well, let's back up first, let's look at Queensborough first. Under the summary, in the one that you asked us to keep, it has a very minor edit to just adding an activity center. In the one we're throwing out, it has a more detailed discussion of, you know, provision for a neighborhood activity center, residential, office, professional, and neighborhood business. That same provision is in the, in the other comp plan, so I want to make sure we're not mixing up our edits somehow.
And I think, and I think what it was, was that that was more, that was more edit than we really needed.
Oh, okay.
So I pared it down a little bit, so, again, one of the, and, and you guys can remember this from our 2015, we're trying to keep the size of our comp plan a little bit smaller, and so if we can be a little more efficient with our language, we've been trying to do that.
So would that same edit be appropriate then on SV1, where that, there is an extra, a full extra bullet point?
Yeah, and you're absolutely correct, yes. We could certainly add that there.
Or eliminate, I guess, eliminate that particular?
Or, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Duplicate the language.
Yep. Let's see, okay. I'll have to find where it was again here, real quick. I'll have to find where it was again here real quick. On, under the Queensborough QB5. Actually, I'm sorry, I already, already covered that one. It's the only other real comment I have right now, is it, actually, on SV7, item 6, under land use policies, it talks about land, land located western Meridian, approximately 400 to 1,300 feet south of 228 Street Southwest, at one dwelling unit per 4,000 square feet. I'm wondering if that particular comment conflicts with policy 2 under Parks? If you look at that, and, and this kind of gets back to a question that a couple of the other commissioners had. Trying to remember why I thought there might be a conflict.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, because we're actually, here, we're saying, this is the appropriate zoning. And on another one, we're actually saying, we should look at acquiring that.
Yes. That's exactly right. So I, I wonder if, in, just wondering if we need to make, again, I think there needs to be as much clarity as we can possibly have around that issue, since we're kind of considering two different options.
Yeah, that does, that does lead us to a conundrum there, okay.
You want to think, think about that and...
I would propose that what I do is that I kind of use this, a similar language we take for the findings, and put it into this, this, this policy that, you know, well... Probably easier just to identify that when we get to the city council, and if the city council decides to acquire it, we make the appropriate switch at that time. I think that's probably the best thing to do.
Okay.
Just from the standpoint of just identifying, this is, this language is here as an optional placeholder in case the council decides to acquire DNR2, and then do the same thing. And just make that a really clear notation there.
Okay.
Because, yeah, you're right, one or the other is going to have to be the one that prevails.
All right, the last comment is more about the affordable housing, a general comment. We're, just procedurally for tonight, we're going to be talking about affordable housing related to, first of all, to Nike Hill. And then, secondly, the general comp plan and, and code changes we're making for affordable housing. And then talking about Riverside Drive. The, the, kind of the meat of the affordable housing issue is included in the, in the general conditions. And then the, the other two sections, those two code sections that address those two subareas, refer to that section. So I think the place to discuss, probably, I want to make sure that discussion happens as part of this first discussion about if there are questions, because I know we had some uncertain, a little bit of uncertainty possibly last meeting about, and at the study session, about how we're going to, you know, what, what the final decision is. I think that's the place for that to happen, because I think once we get to those individual subarea discussions in the code, all they say is whatever it says in the general conditions, for the most, the most point.
Exactly.
I just want to clarify that.
And, along those lines, we have a little bit of new language for you. What occurred in the last few hours is we've been kind of going back and forth with, with Arch about some of the actual provisions and making sure that we had them copacetic between the two. And we actually have some slight changes we want to go over with you as you go through that discussion point. So, I think, are we ready?
Hang on, one sec.
All right, sorry, okay, sorry.
I just have one follow-up question to Commissioner Clark's point. So if we turn to page 27 in our packet, it talks about the different zoning for the northeast corner of Meridian and 228. We had, at one point, we had talked about 50%, I believe, retail on the ground floor? Or was it always 25%? Sorry.
I thought at one point, we were talking about a percentage of the street front?
Yes.
As opposed to the gross, the square, square footage?
Exactly.
And that doesn't appear to be reflected in these graphics, to me.
Actually, when you measure that out, that's 25%. I just, anyway, but, what I did is, in the actually, implement, in the actual implementing language, we removed any kind of a discussion about gross floor area, it actually does say street frontage.
Okay, I ran into a couple areas, so I'll, I'll just bring that up as we go through, yeah.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern, I'm, I guess, like Commissioner Clark, I guess I'm not, I don't know if I'm speaking for you, but on the upper floors, I'm not concerned about having that 50% residential requirement, because I think the market will drive whatever direction the, the developer wants to go. My main concern is that the, the ground floor, you know, whether this is to scale or not, but generally, right now, apartments make a lot of sense around baffle. And, if I was a developer, I would probably look at this and try to maximize my residential yield on this lot, which would potentially lessen the already fairly small commercial benefit that this area has. And if we're trying to get the RAC and have a, you know, a center for the local neighborhood, I want to make sure that business is part of it, that, you know, there's a shop or something that people can go to. And we talked about reducing traffic. So I guess I don't want that to be minimized by making a requirement so low that alls we see is, you know, dense multifamily in that spot, that's all. That's my, I guess, main concern.
Any thoughts on that?
None on that in particular, no.
I, I agree with you, I think, I think it is important to ensure that we have, have a mix. And I don't really have an opinion about what, what is the best to have there in terms of whether it's residential, retailer, or office. But I, I'm, I'm fine with the mix that is shown here. The only thing I would say is that, I, I'm assuming that in the code, you'll have some specifics about 25% minimum frontage must be retailer, office, but there has to be a square foot component that I would think, doesn't, doesn't there? I mean, you can't build a five-foot-deep shop that's...
Then you have the market that controls that.
Yeah, I suppose so.
They're not going to create something that they can't rent.
Right, so 20 years, okay. Maybe that, that will get fleshed out a little bit more as we work through the individual page comments, I suppose. Okay, so I'm, is it appropriate now for us to jump into the page-by-page review, is that?
Sure, if you'd like to.
And, and let's, again, let's try to stick to, to not, anything grammatical or spelling or anything. We'll let, let the, the staff take care of those. I'm just going to kind of start like we have in the past, and the two new commissioners, you might get bored to death by this, but we're going to, page by page, and, and just, just ask if there are any, any comments. So I'm going to start with, I got to get to the right page. I am on page 1 of the proposed planning commission findings, conclusion, and recommendation. Are there any comments on page 1? Are there any comments on page 2? Page 3? Page 4 or 5? Page 5 or 6? Excuse me, 6 or 7? 8 or 9? 10 or 11? 12 or 13? Did anybody read this? No, I'm just kidding. 14 or 15? 16 or 17? 18 or 19? 20 or 21? Okay.
It's on page 16. And I was, and this is just an information question for me. In the middle of page 16, I was, noticed that there was a higher trip count for single-family versus multi. Is that because you assume the parents are going to have to be running in and out with kids? I mean, where do you get that higher count from?
Okay, this is actually from the International Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And essentially, what they do is they, across the country, do a number of traffic studies where they measure trips from areas. And they actually come up with a chart that basically says, okay, in single-family residential areas, we can identify that this is what the AM peak is, this is what the PM peak is, and this is the average daily. And interestingly, interestingly enough, what they've found is for detached, single-family, there are about 10 average daily trips generated. For multifamily or condos, it's about six tenths of that, about 6% of that. So that's basically where that comes from.
And they don't dissect why those numbers are different, they just count them, count the trips?
Well, I, I'm sure there's some reasons for that. However, basically, what it is, they're trying to come up with a kind of an empirical assessment, okay, what is it we're seeing from these, these types of land uses? And this is basically what the, the adopted national standard is.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, in fact, that's a good idea, I think I'll put that in there.
Thanks.
Mention that more clearly.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Do you know if that's all trips, or just vehicle trips?
Those are vehicle trips.
Just vehicle trips?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'm going to jump back up to page 20 and 21, any comments on either of those pages?
You have a comment, I guess, along Gene's comment about the tables on 15, 16. Same general comment, Bruce, I guess, just combing through those again and making sure the numbers are working. On table 4 on page 20, when I looked at the lot yields, did not seem to match up between tables. And again, I guess it's the same general comment, but there's trips, and then there's, there's lot capacity, and those two tie together and...
Yes.
Come from one table and go to another table and...
And I'll make sure that this is all, we get the most updated table and use that one throughout.
Got you.
Yeah, that's a good comment.
And then, I think I've asked you about this before, Bruce, but we're given a range, and I don't really like that, but that's the way it goes. So, but just to clarify, so the, the yields and the trips, those ranges, the ranges on trips are directly related to the yield?
Yes.
Times the factor, right? So those should multiply through the table, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything on that.
We'll make sure to do that.
Yeah.
You bet, good, good catch.
So Roger, considering this, that these tables need to be checked, do you see any reason why we should hold off on blessing this thing tonight? Or can we go ahead and do that, assuming that you'll make sure that these numbers are, are correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, we've seen the numbers over the several months we've been discussing this.
So Bruce, do you, is that, you agree with that?
Yeah, I think so. And basically, what you do is you just, when you make your motion, you just say, and the, you know, approve the draft findings, and it's authorized the chair to sign as amended.
Okay.
And the discussion we have here is the amendments.
Okay, sounds good. Roger, anymore? I'm going to move on to page 22 and 23, any comments? 24 and 25? Go ahead, Ron.
Page 24, Bruce, 15, no, item 15. The first paragraph there, towards the bottom, we're trying to describe the portion of the DNR2 property, that's RAC. I don't know that 2, 2.2 acres is, I mean, we're talking about the north, 2.2 acres. And are we, are we dictating what that boundary line is going to look like? In other words, can it be a diagonal line? Is it going straight across? Should we, should we say the north 100 and some feet? Or, do we need to be more descriptive on that? Or does that take care, get taken care of somewhere, somewhere else?
If you look at the policy, I actually do assign some, some, basically some lineal foot provisions there. And that's where you'll actually measure it from the right of way and go down that 400 feet and 1,300 feet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else on either of those pages?
On 25, the Malik request? I understand that was a little bit, the request in itself was a little bit ambiguous, is that right? Do we, as a matter of course, in these kind of issues, do, do we issue some kind of formal response to these applicants who are requesting rezones?
Well, in a way, your findings are the response.
Okay, so we don't, okay.
And basically, what will happen is that they will get these findings, so they understand what the, the parameters were when you made your decision.
So we're not giving him what he asked for, but we're not denying it, we're kind of...
You're coming close.
We're rolling, we're rolling with it. And I guess the assumption is that he's okay with that? Or, is there any, is there any interaction that, that we have with those applicants that just kind of closed the loop on those?
Well, Mr. Malik has attended quite a few of the hearings, and he was at the hearing when the commission deliberated upon what to assign the area. And he was happy with me after the hearing, so I'm not sure how to gauge that, but he has not...
I just didn't know if there's any requirement for some kind of formal response from the city to, back to the applicants.
And, and I am...
More of a general question, probably.
Always willing to, to speak to the folks if they have questions about that.
I have a couple of things on these two pages. Item 17, under the McCost LLC Coast Equities Property, Planning Commission Recommendation, acquire the MC Coast property as city parkland. Do we, I think we also need to, as part of a recommendation, refer that to the Parks Board for further consideration? Or is that, is that, is that redundant?
That was a pretty strong recommendation from the commission, as I recall. There was less, you know, and/or maybe ifs.
So we, we are making a statement that we feel it should be acquired, as opposed to letting the Parks Board make up their mind about that, is that?
Now, that's your, that's the recommendation from them.
Is that everybody on board with that?
Yes.
The one caveat, it's already on ProSAP's list of properties to acquire. Oh, sorry, MC Coast, no.
Yeah, that's right, yes.
But yeah, I think that was in line with what we heard from the citizens and...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't overstepping our boundaries by making a recommendation that we can't enact, or we can't actually recommend that. That's, seems like that's the Parks Board's job.
Well, and, and, and you're correct. You know, the Parks Board is really the laybody that's been assigned by the council to make those decisions. If you'd like, we can add a sentence that says, you know, consistent with Parks Board's direction or action, or something like that.
I, I, I'm okay either way, if, I just wanted to bring it up, if, if anybody feels strongly one way or the other.
Yeah, I guess I would agree with that. When you go to the next page at the top, it says, as an alternative to acquisition, which, that's really what we're talking about here, is, is not, it's not an alternative, it's just if it, if it's determined that the city's not going to acquire it. So maybe a little more specific on that.
Yeah.
And then it goes down, talks about the clustering ordinance, which I think is important.
I do too, actually, that was my next thought. I appreciate this being in here, because I think, you know, the owner of the McCost property did, kind of walked away without really getting any part of what they asked for. But I think there is kind of a silver lining to this, that if we can, as a, as a planning commission, a council, and a staff, figure out a way to put together a clustering provision, that actually does give them a pretty good option on that property, I think, in the event that it doesn't work out to be a park property. Okay, I'm going to, any other comments on 24 and 25? 26 and 27, Commissioner Cave, you had some comments about that, any, any further?
Yeah, I, I don't want to hold up voting, but I would push to have 50% for retailer, office. If we really want to have it have some value here, I don't know that 25% gets us there. That's my take.
Well, remember, that's a minimum. So the idea would be, then you'd let the market determine if 25% was enough, or if they wanted to have more, but it's, it's a minimum, so. In other locations of the city, we have a 10% minimum.
Yeah, I, I still feel, I don't know, maybe it would be out of character for the rest of the city, but we're taking a neighborhood business where that's all that's allowed right now. We're giving them the opportunity to put residents, residential units in there. So I think we should keep a larger portion of our business backbone on that piece of property.
So, 50% of the floor area, or the frontage? Or is that kind of up for discussion?
Yeah, up for discussion.
I guess I would have to say, I, I, and I know that the graphic doesn't necessarily depict 25%, but we are trying to, to generate some activity here. And I think to have a little, I don't know, post office stop or something on one corner of the building, and then the rest, you know, residential, I don't, I don't think that's what we're going for. So I mean, I, I guess, I would be in favor of, of requiring a 50% of the frontage to be retail on that first floor. You look incredulous.
No, I'm looking at you to make sure, I'm sorry. These are reading glasses? So, see, I have to do this, to see...
You're not frightened right now?
Because if I do this, I won't say if anybody's naughty, sorry about that.
You look like you was thinking you'd never heard such a crazy thing.
No, I'm sorry. No, no, this is your choice.
Any other thoughts on that?
I, I think Patrick's making a very valid argument. I understand 104 swapped out their retail to put exercise, their recreation in there. So is, if, if this... So is, if, if this construction has that option to put something like that in there, can we put a limit on how much of it would be dedicated to like a rec room or whatever? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So that, so that a chunk of it still remains retail versus ending up with no retail at all?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's always my concern also, the live-work units, which I think they turn into live units after a while. I mean, it might be a small personal business, but you're not really getting foot traffic or drawing a lot of
Yeah, the code, draft code language identifies the type of uses within that 25%. And it's retail uses, eating and drinking establishments, recreation, culture, entertainment uses, personal services and other similar businesses. So it'd be really hard for somebody to justify converting it into a, just a rec center, unless it was a rec center that was available to other, the outside business, as a business.
I, I just know from visiting my son who lives in Renton and lives in a comparatively new apartment, they have a very lovely community area that could eat, that's dedicated strictly to the people who live in the apartment, that could easily take up 50% of the frontage. You know?
Yes.
Beyond exercise, there's also gathering area and that sort of thing. And, and no retail.
But Bruce, you're saying that would not be an option based on your
Yeah. This language is pretty tight. I mean, and it's similar to the other language we've got within our code, which actually does say it has to be a business. So the idea is if, and 104 is a little bit different because that was an optional type of an approach. It wasn't mandatory that they have that provision, right? Yeah, sorry.
Any other thoughts on a 25% versus a 50% or any other percent on the frontage?
Yeah, I guess it, I don't know if it addresses that specifically, but I was, I just, it just came upon me that I was looking at this graphic. And this is assuming that that market stays and doesn't like sell to say this person who wants to develop there. I mean, are we, we conceivably could see a footprint of that whole, almost that whole property. We're seeing this blue, you know, these graphics that, that are speculative graphics about, you know, to guide us. But, so I don't know if opening that scenario up in our heads helps us rethink or think the same about the percentage and what could, you know, of office professional versus residential. Because, I mean, if somebody were to, you know, basically do underground parking and, I mean, that could be a lot bigger. And so is what we're looking at now, if we think about it being a bigger building, a bigger footprint, do we like that, I guess? That's just
Bruce, does the red dash line on this graphic, at least the north and the west property lines, does that coincide with our planning area?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Or well, the planning area for this particular
Yeah.
For that corner. Commissioner Velez's point brings up something I hadn't thought of either. Is that frontage requirement just on 228th or is it also on Meridian?
Meridian or 228th, yes.
Okay.
Either, either roadway.
And, and it applies whether that building butts up directly against the right of way or, or whether, actually, is it, it would have to butt up against the right of way, it sounds like. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So there would have to be, the storefront or the building front would have to be on the right of way with no parking between the street and the
Correct. And that's a requirement from the citywide regulations or designing constructions, or design standards.
So I, I think it is probably a pretty good chance that the entire site within setbacks will be, will be taken up by the building with the exception of whatever outdoor parking is required. And that would be at the rear, in, in the back of the building if it were out outside.
Right, yes.
So I, I guess I'd weigh in. I want to make sure we're not, you know, trying to play market specialists here with what, you know, a particular developer or builder might want, or landowner might want to do with their property. But I, I, I also see the point of trying to direct this in the, in the direction of a vibrant community. I love what's happening downtown Bothell with the storefronts that are down there and just seems to be a lot more active with people out walking and that kind of thing. So I think more than 25% is okay. I don't know whether it's 50% or a third, but I think maybe it's a situation where we should, do we want to take a quick hand, hand count or something on what people think? And maybe just say, I, I personally think that 50% might be a little bit too much. I'd be more likely to say a third, but I guess I'd
So to clarify, we're talking about, so whatever number we come up with, that represents either retail or office, correct?
Yes, or other business and personal services uses, yes.
Okay.
And we're talking about Long Meridian and 228th. So it's a, it's a pretty good chunk of footage, I think, that we're talking about.
Yes, it is.
Actually, one other point of clarification as I look at your graphic. The, the way you show this here, that, that frontage for the same size of space, the frontage is greater on that than it would be if it was taken out of the middle of the, of the, you see what I'm saying? Because you're on a corner.
That's correct.
Is there, is the code to address that or is that just kind of a loophole that exists?
Well, the idea behind it, if they did just put it to one side or the other, I mean, you still have the 25% along that roadway.
We're just talking of lineal footage, right?
Yes.
Along the frontage.
Yes, yes, yeah. So that's the, you know, and in theory is the smaller the building, even though it's a smaller amount of frontage, it's still professionally, sorry, proportionally the same, 25%.
Why don't we just have everybody quickly weigh in on what you think about that, the percentage? And we'll kind of see if we all have, kind of have a consensus here on providing staff with some direction. Go ahead.
I'm fine with 50% because this is just a recommendation and people who are invested in it are obviously going to have opinions later on. And that's where the decision will be made. So I'm fine with supporting 50%.
What we, what we're talking about would be requiring them to do at least 50%.
Right.
So, okay.
Right.
Jason, any thoughts?
I'm, I'm a little bit conflicted because I, I would want to avoid them doing surface parking. And I think if we did 50% of the frontage, we would eliminate some of the space for, you know, structured parking, but, but not above, but, you know, that's closed off from the street. Because there's no, I, I can't imagine that they can afford to do below-grade parking at the cost of below-grade parking with only a 35-foot height limit. They would have to go higher to make that, to make that pencil out. So I don't, I don't know the answer to it. You know, I don't want to play developer, but I just wonder if we, if we do a smaller or a bigger requirement, maybe they'll build smaller so they can have the surface parking. And then we, we don't have that great transition from, from frontage to the next neighborhood. We have a parking lot.
That's, that's a good point. I think it is, it seems pretty unlikely to me that there would be a underground parking on a, on a unit like this.
Yeah.
On a three-story unit, doesn't generally get supported.
Yes, as Commissioner Hampton identifies, it, underground parking or structured parking is very expensive. And you only have three levels, that's going to be really, really costly to do that type of construction.
Okay. Commissioner Cave?
That's a good point. You're making me rethink myself. I think just based on all the previous discussions, I still think business needs to be an active part of whatever we do here. So that's why I am in support of bumping that up. More is better. Right now, I'm gonna land at 50%, but anything more than 25, I think, is a step in the right direction.
Go ahead. Commissioner.
I appreciate the input about parking. That's a big driver in these things. I, I think I'm gonna kind of, what I'm gonna do is kind of land in the middle on the 33. A third, 33 and a third.
33 and a third.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Velez?
Yeah, I, um, 33 and a third. Okay, that's a good one. Yeah, I was just, the initial graphic, I thought something wrong with it. Even when I draw out 50%, it, it still seems, it seems more reasonable to me. So, but I really appreciate Commissioner Hampton's idea about and concerns about the parking. But I think 50% seems correct. I'm also thinking about the development that'll likely happen if, if it's not, if it's not acquired by the city across the street. So, but I think 50%, I would go with that.
I, I hadn't really thought of the parking thing and that actually changed my mind. I was thinking maybe 20, 50% as well. But again, I don't want to do anything that's gonna preclude people from, you know, using this to its maximum potential to do what we're trying to do with this code amendment. I would be okay with going with the, I guess, the 33 and a third clause with, that Commissioner Cecil had. So it seems that we're kind of caught in the middle here. I guess, real quick, who's in favor of the 50%? Two there, three there, okay. And who's in favor of the 33 and a third? And 25%?
I'm still conflicted. I mean, I, I look to you, do you think that they would develop the full block and be able to fit parking in there? And, and your experience with projects similar to this?
Structured parking?
Not structured parking, but I, I'm thinking about like the, the ground floor parking at, at Six Oaks or something? Where it's closed off from the street and it's not a surface lot?
In fact, that was one of the reasons why I only covered a portion of that lot because I figured the rest manager would probably have to be parking.
Surface?
Assuming, yeah, surface parking, I was assuming they probably wouldn't do structured parking, so they'd have to have surface parking.
Surface parking just seems like a poor land use when you're trying to build a retail center.
Well, I think we're, you know, we're trying to guess how big of a parcel is gonna develop. And if it's only one, then they don't have a whole lot of room. So I think we're strapping them a little bit. I guess in the scenario where it goes bigger, that might be different. But I think we gotta kind of look at all the, kind of the range of possibilities.
Well, I'm not really sure where to go from here other than
Can we find something between 50 and 33 or?
I think we're splitting hairs at that point, maybe a little bit. But can we, can we leave, can we say a minimum of 25%? Or could we go with say 50% and then have a director's discretion aspect to this? I hate to recommend that, but we
Yeah, I'd have, I'd have to craft some criteria for him to apply his discretion because, you know, you don't want to just say, just leave it too open in it. He'd have to have some discretion to reduce it.
Okay. Well, as of right now, three of the commissioners have asked for 50% and two have asked for 33 and a third. And Commissioner Hampton, you haven't stated anything. Are we? If it stands that way, it looks like it's gonna be 50%, so. You on board with that? Looks like it's gonna be 50%.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on 26 and 27? 28 and 29?
Here, I got one. I got one down here.
Go ahead.
Yes, so under number 23, it's, I don't know if it's just the wording for me, but on the rezones to require affordable housing, this is establish standards and criteria for rezones that establish a procedure to evaluate when the property does rezon. Does that seem a little bit confusing language there or does it seem okay to everybody?
It seems a little confusing to me too.
Now, which, which
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, under number 23, under affordable housing, under, finally, under the city's adopted housing strategy, there's that boldface rezones to require?
Yes.
And then right after that, establish standards and criteria for rezones that establish a procedure to evaluate?
Yes, and that's a direct quote from the Housing Strategy Plan. The Adopted Housing Strategy Plan.
Can I wordsmith real quick?
Well,
No?
That'd be a process, unfortunately.
Well, I, I think that if it, it at least needs an interpretation or an explanation because I, I honestly can't get my way through that sentence that's five, five lines long.
It's like you can just take out that, establish a procedure to, it's like criteria for rezones or something to evaluate one property.
But if you said it's directly from that, then I, you know, maybe we shouldn't mess with it.
It's from that policy in the, in the comp plan, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, actually, what we have, we have a housing strategy plan that actually has some strategies that go a little bit further than our housing element. And this is one of the strategies from that. But maybe what we do is we, we explain what that means as far as the planning commission's viewpoint goes.
I think that'd be good.
Okay.
Just, just a quick comment. I think it's the second establish that is throwing us off. Establish standards and criteria for rezones that establish a procedure. Maybe that second establish, leave it there and add or, or replace it with the word create a procedure.
I think we can't change this because it's a direct quote from elsewhere in the comp.
So just don't even touch it.
It's already, it's already
So put an interpretation on it.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we'll just explain the policy a little bit more and then go from there.
That's good.
Good, good pickup. David, any, Commissioner Velez, anything else? I'm curious as to why, and this kind of, I guess it's item 20, which spans between page 25 and 28. We talk about the southwest quadrant, the northeast quadrant. The northwest quadrant, but we don't say anything about the southwest quadrant. I realize it's, it's not any of these zones, but doesn't it need to be addressed? That we're, aren't we leaving that as 5,400D? Or I'm sorry, south
Southeast quadrant.
Southeast quadrant, yeah, sorry.
Yes. Okay.
I don't know, it, it just seemed like we were leaving 25% out. Is that right? Commissioner Cecil?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's, that's all I had on that. Let's see, moving on to page 30 and 31, the last two pages of the, of the recommendations here before we get into the exhibits.
Page, page 30, Bruce. The last line there before conclusions. We talk about these planning code amendments. Also include a mandatory affordable housing component within both the subarea plans and implementing regulations. I don't know if it's worth noting that we're, that our mandatory provision is related to rezones. Good, this kind of makes it sound like there's a mandatory
Good point.
requirement in those.
That's a good point. Is that an easy edit?
I'll refer back to that housing strategy that nobody likes.
Okay. Let's, any other thoughts on 30 and 31?
Yeah, I got one here, real quick. Yes, so it's more just common, I guess, under the, under 26, this is support development and preservation of affordable housing. And then it says very low, low and moderate income. And I guess it's just kind of a point, and it is true that we're addressing it here, but I really hope, because we're gonna talk about affordable housing later and we have some stuff written up in here, but it's simply with, the lowest we go is moderate.
You're correct.
So we're not, we're not addressing any of the low or very low, which I think is extremely important, so.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, yeah. We need to make that consistent here.
Well, what do you mean by that, Bruce?
Well, I think the idea we've had is the following section that talks about the planning commission, I need to make sure that planning commission's decision on which affordable level is being tied, I need to make sure that's very clear.
Correct.
Because that policy refers to a number of different income levels.
But this policy stands whether we elect to do it in these particular areas or not.
But, but the commission has made a specific choice as to which income level. So I'll make sure and clarify that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I'm gonna move on to exhibit A, which is the Queensborough-Brentwood Crystal Springs Subarea Plan. And we are looking at the first version of that, pages QB1 through QB10. Any thoughts on page one? I have one minor thing, and this is maybe nitpicking Bruce, but third bullet point says development of a neighborhood activity center at the northwest and southwest corners of Meridian Avenue and 228th Street. I don't think the southwest corner is actually in that
You're correct.
In that
Yeah, you're correct. And when I was, I was, I was thinking about that and thinking about it. And the activity center does include both
Yeah.
areas in it, yeah, I mean
Kind of semantics, I think, but
Yeah, you're right.
QB2 and QB3, any comments on those? QB4 and QB5? QB six and QB seven? QB eight and QB nine?
Back to QB six, just making sure that we get Commissioner Clark's point earlier and add language about either acquisition or make it consistent throughout.
Exactly.
Thank you. Let's see, I think we are on QB ten. Anything there? Okay, let's move on to the next part of exhibit A, which is the Shelton View, Meridian, Third Avenue Southeast Subarea Plan. That's sheets SV one through SV twelve. Anything on SV one? I think that same comment, Bruce, applies on, on that one as far as the northwest not, and that's on the first and third, or second and fourth bullet points.
Yep.
SV two and SV three?
This, this is just a comment, um, because I love, I'm a birder. And I noticed that, which I loved and appreciate is the comment of herons and rookeries. And that we have a neighboring nesting area to Kenmore's rookery. Kenmore's rookery, as I understand it, is dying. The trees are dying. So I don't know if we want to have a more active, you know, protection or, or just paying attention to the fact that the neighboring Kenmore rookery is dying. And, uh, just keep an eye on the health of our herons and their nesting.
Bruce, that does bring up a good point is that we're, we, we've been talking about this subarea plan with respect to very specific items. My assumption has been that those are the only items that we're really here to discuss. We haven't had any public hearing discussion about that sort of thing. So is it, is it appropriate or not to have a discussion about something that's a little bit unrelated to the topics we've been discussing?
Well, of course, this is a description of the physical geography. It does include the potential for the heron areas and the feeding and of herons within this subarea. I'm just trying to think how I can connect in something that's happening in Kenmore into.
Yeah.
A policy from the city of Bothell. But, um, that's more of those, definitely one of those regional things that we should probably pay an attention to.
And I, I think another point is that, um, there's, this is in the summary of this subarea plan, summary section of the subarea plan. And it, I believe that heron and environmental wetland systems, that sort of thing are addressed throughout this subarea plan. Is that correct? I mean, under policies and.
Yeah, we have a bunch of policies.
Yeah, I thought so as well. So I think what we probably ought to do is make sure we're, we understand that, the context of that comment with respect to the whole, not only just this subarea, but the rest of the, the plan. I think we may be, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm happy to hear from people. But I think trying to address that issue is, is part of what we're doing right now may be pretty difficult. I think, um, we would need to get some, possibly some public input and that sort of thing. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I wasn't saying that we need to act on it.
Oh, okay.
I, I was just saying that if, you know, as a group here in Bothell, people are not aware that that rookery is, is failing, that we might want to just kind of keep our finger in the pulse. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, great.
Yeah, I actually heard something about that, but I hadn't gotten into the details yet, so, thank you.
Good comment, appreciate that. Okay, uh, anything else on SV one? SV two and SV three? Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, quick note, parks and open space, we point out that there's no parks on the subarea. Do we want to refer people to either Pro Sap that the DNR property is on the list? Or that we make a recommendation that the city acquired DNR one? Or do we just want to leave it general like we have it here?
My recommendation would be to keep it fairly general here, uh, because the way the language works, it works either way we, we go in the, uh, the, whatever acquisition occurs out there.
And, and we do address that further on in this subarea plan as well. I think I lost track. Are, are we on SV four and SV five? Any comments on either one of those? SV six and SV seven?
Yeah, Bruce, under SV seven, um, point number seven in the red area. I don't know if I'm misinterpreting that, but on the second line, it says one dwelling unit per four thousand square feet. Is that supposed to be fifty-four hundred A?
Oh, yes, it is. Thank you.
Yeah, because we're talking about the east side in that section, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I got, I got the description right, I just didn't get the text right, thank you.
Good catch. Anything else, Commissioner Vliet? Okay. I have a general comment about this. I was almost going to say it when we were talking in general earlier, but we, we've spent all this time with, um, defining these areas and we had all these maps and things that were really easy to look at. Then all of a sudden, we go from there to describing them in terms of feet. And it, it just kind of went from being really clear to me to being really confusing. Is there any way, I, I understand that there's a hesitation to make this any longer, but either put a map in or refer to a figure or something like that?
Every subarea has a figure number three, which is the full land use characterization. So it'll be just like the map you see on your screen right there, that's basically in figure three, yes.
And, uh, is, is, is that clear enough in here that you can refer to that figure three to, as you're reading through this?
Yeah, because the, the first thing that we say in our land use panel policies is many of the land use policies are bigger than figure three land use designations.
I guess that's pretty clear.
So, uh, you know, as long as they don't skip past that.
Like I did? Okay. And then, uh, I guess that, uh, comment that I made earlier on page, item six or, uh, policy six on page SV seven, you're going to reflect that in the, uh, policy two under Parks, Recreation and Open Space?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, anything else on SV six and seven?
Uh, one quick question, SV seven, number ten, the Army Reserve FEMA property. We talked about civic educational designation for that area. I don't remember us, I guess, discussing that. We were looking at office professional or living at ninety-six hundred, do we need to?
Yeah, and that, and this is where the, the comp plan and the zoning des- classifications get a little bit mixed up. The zoning classification, we are ninety-six hundred. The comp plan actually says civic educational, because that's the use that's there. Uh, just like the schools, all the schools are identified as civic educational. And that's where you get that little bit of disparity we have between the comprehensive plan and the zoning classifications.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay. SV eight and SV nine? SV ten and SV eleven? Uh, SV twelve?
Uh, SV ten, number two. Um, do we want to call out the owner for the MC Coast property? Or do we want to just say the privately owned property? East of the FEMA facility? Sorry, number two, second line down, we talk about acquiring the DNR one, DNR two and the MC Coast property. Since that may change hands, do we want to just leave it as a?
Oh, I, I.
Privately owned parcel to the east of.
Generalize that description as the property just north of the DNR one.
That's a good point, yeah, I think it makes sense. Okay. Anything else, Mr. K?
Maybe, I guess to go to that, maybe it would, uh, help to just include the size, general, you know, sixteen acre or whatever property to the north of it.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. We are going to move on, we're going to skip the QB one through QB ten section that is, uh, redundant. And that's not, not formally part of the packet. Uh, let's talk about, um, exhibit B then. Uh, this is the actual Bothell Municipal Code section that actually codifies what we've been talking about in the code. So this is a revision to the actual Bothell Municipal Code itself. And, uh, I guess it technically is maybe a little bit more detailed and kind of the nitty gritty of what, of what we've been talking about more than just policy, policies and actions. So let's talk about that. I'm going to just jump through this kind of a section at a time. We're going to talk about twelve point four-two, which is on pages, uh, really it's on the first two pages of this document. Any comments on that first page, twelve point four-two dash one? Go ahead.
Yeah, so Bruce, here's the section in, uh, B where I saw the reference to the gross floor area.
Exactly, and I need to make sure it's linear footprintage, yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And then also on A, we're seeing maximum building height shall be thirty-five feet. We've also been discussing three floors. Do we need to include, is this a situation where you can go three feet or three floors or thirty-five feet? Is it, is there whichever's shorter, whichever's taller? How, how are we interpreting that in the code?
Uh, thirty-five feet is a definitive number and.
It is.
The maximum you can go and whether you can get three floors or two floors, depend upon your style of development.
Okay.
Is what we do.
Thank you.
And, and what we're doing here, Bruce, is consistent with other sections of the code where we actually do define, kind of put specific criteria in place for certain zones where there's a multi-zoned area.
Yes, in fact, this is what the zoning code, which is the, I mean, you think the comp plan is big, the zoning code is just as big.
Yep.
Or well, the Bothell Municipal Code, I should say, it's got a number of different titles.
Okay. Uh, any, we jumped ahead, we were on twelve forty-two dash one, is, was there any comments on that page? And then if not, uh, twelve, anymore on twelve forty-two dash two?
Eric, I got one.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, under Part C, um, I don't know what it is. May, maybe it's the correct wording, it maybe is. But, um, there's the word may under the, on the third line. It says devoted exclusively to residential uses, which may include any affordable dwelling units. It just seems to me of the size of the, the size of the buildings we're likely talking about and the number of units that it would, it would require, you know, affordable housing onsite with, with maybe the director's discretion, but I don't know. But maybe may is fine, anybody okay with that?
I, I'm fine with it, I think, I mean, you could say if required or something like that. But I, I think it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate, it doesn't make it so that they don't have to do affordable housing if required, so.
Okay.
I'm fine either way. Okay, uh, let's move on to section twelve forty-four, which is specific. It's the Bothell Municipal Code specific to the Shelton View, Meridian, Third Avenue Southeast Subarea. Uh, and, and just point of reference, the, the, there is a section of the Bothell Municipal Code that covers every subarea in, in our, in, in the city of Bothell. And, and we're covering, I believe, three of them here tonight. We're, we're actually addressing changes to those that implement the recommendations that we're making. So you, you would, if you looked in the code, you'd see a number of sections of the code that address all of the subareas in, in order. Is that correct, Bruce?
That's right, yes.
Okay, uh, any, any thoughts on twelve point forty-four dash one? Mr. Vliet?
Yeah, just, I just noticed it, I read through it before, but. So there's a very different, I guess there's a very different building height requirement language in these two subareas, is that right? With the thirty-five feet, but maybe increase to sixty-five?
Oh. No, you're, uh, sure, on the, on that first item one, so you're looking at?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, you're looking at a different location. The, the twelve forty-four zero four.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't apply to what we're doing.
That's another location.
So we're looking at the red stuff?
Yes, only the red stuff is changing, yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, no, that, that's a different zoning class. If you see it, R A C O P C B, not N B.
I'm going to skip the pages that don't have any red, just so we don't.
Okay.
Happen to do that again, if everybody's okay with that. So I'm going to move on to twelve point forty-four dash three. That is, that, I think that more addresses the same, same thing. Any thought, any comments on that? Okay, uh, that covers that section of the Bothell Municipal Code. We are now going to, uh, jump into a discussion of, so we're shifting gears a little bit here. We're going to jump into the, uh, our recommendations for affordable housing and the specific Bothell Municipal Code amendments that would take place as part of that. And I actually want to back up one second here. I, I've been holding this exhibit that you handed out, Bruce, that was the letter from, uh, Mr. Feek.
Yes.
I don't know that anybody had a chance to read this yet as we've been going through this, but I would suggest that we take about a minute or a minute and a half, everybody scan through this, read it. And then if we have discussion, because we're getting ready to close the discussion about the comp, comp plan, the zoning type issues with, with respect to this. So I, I'm going to ask that everybody take about a minute or a minute and a half or just, you know, say something when you're done. And, uh, and let's just real quickly read this. David, could you pull up the, um, the map that, that addresses this letter? He's talking about the east side of, uh, I guess the west end, the east side of Meridian there, south of two-twenty-eighth?
Is that it?
Yes, thank you. Everybody had a chance to read it? Okay, uh, any, any, any comments, any thoughts on this letter?
I, I just want to thank Mr. Feek for submitting it. I think last time he came right after a major operation, so we appreciate, I guess, the continued feedback. I think we're in line with the first part of his letter where, um, it's our recommendation that the DNR two property be preserved as parkland, if that's the park board's recommendation. I'm still, um, of the belief that R fifty-four hundred A would be as high of a density as I'd want to go on the east side of Meridian. Just because I think that's a big change from R ninety-six hundred already.
Anybody else, any thoughts on that? Go ahead.
I, I have the same, the R ninety-six on the other side is the deal breaker for, for me. I mean, I understand his perspective here. I'm thinking of the neighbors on the east side of him, that that's a big leap.
Okay. Any, anyone else?
Yeah, I think he did come and testify, and I remember we had a discussion around his testimony and, and at that time, and, uh, I think came to the same conclusion that we're, we're already at.
I believe so too, and I want to clarify on the west side, um, he's asking that we, it appears that we leave the entire area uh, south of two-twenty-eighth for DNR two. My understanding is we are recommending purchase of the, of, just a portion of the DR, DNR two property as a park. And then the upper part is what like we've been discussing, that southwest quadrant as, as the other zoning.
Yeah, one of the interesting things about, there's going to be a lot of different options that's going to be investigated as the, the park board and the planning, I'm sorry, the city council, uh, discuss this area. You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
Eric, I want a question here.
Yeah.
Unrelated to that, but just while we have the graphic up, because I know we're bringing to the close the discussion. I just want to make sure if this was, I know this is the final draft PC recommendation, this map that we're looking at right now? I just want to, so the part down on the bottom, it should just be R ninety-six hundred and there shouldn't be any of that or change to R eighty-four hundred, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, great.
We, we took, we took that out.
Yep, okay. Okay, that being said. Yep, okay. Okay, that being said, I think we've looked at that exhibit, and we'll move on, on to, again, looking at Exhibit B to the recommendations, and we're looking at the Draft Planning Commission Recommended Affordable Housing Code Amendments. Dave, is this what you handed us, a replacement for what we have in the packet?
Yes, we've made some minor modifications to the, what you received in the packet. I've tried to keep the pagination the same, but just for clarity, we decided to give you a handout with the revised language. The page breaks remain the same until just the last few pages, for anyone who was following with the, with the packet. So I'd just like to also clarify, we're still in the hearing for the Nike Hill Plan and Code Amendments. I'm just taking over for Bruce here on the, these Affordable Housing Code Amendments. So, and they deal with the general requirements section as well as the subarea section. So when we get at the end to the South Riverside, that'll be the time to take a break and, and shift to old business and to handle that. So I, and Arthur Sullivan and Mike Stanger from Arch are here with us too, to help through this discussion. I'll handle things from the podium and can make some changes to the text as we, as we go through it. But we don't really, and we have the presentations that you've seen in the past, if we need to refer to any of those figures, but I think you can continue with the page-by-page comments if you have any, and then where we have things that we want to bring your, to your attention, we'll jump in as well.
Okay. So are the changes that you're, we're going to be referring to a previous version that we've marked up, and then looking at a new version, are the changes going to jump out at us, or do you want to point them out as we, as we go through this?
We've tried to highlight, well, both in the previous version and this one, there are highlighted sections that we think need your attention, either sections that you hadn't given, made, made decisions on, or given clear direction on, as well as some sections that are bolded that represent changes that we just wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay. All right. Is everybody ready to move through this page by page? Is that okay? Okay. Exhibit B, and we're looking at, starting with page one of that Draft Planning Commission Recommended Affordable Housing Code Amendments. Any thoughts on page one? Page two.
I may be misunderstanding this. On page three, 1207030, Subpoint A, creating five or more dwelling units, is that for the in lieu fee?
No, that's, that's the threshold for, for complying with the affordable housing provisions. So that's, the reason that's highlighted is that's the one, one of the issues that you didn't come to a decision on.
As opposed to 10 units and above?
Yeah, it was the...
Okay.
The 10 units and above was, was determining whether or not, was that you could do a fee in lieu of the, is that correct?
Well, with 10 units and above, they would actually have to provide some affordable housing.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So it was a different, slightly different, it's a, it is a, you're looking at whether you have to do affordable housing at all versus whether you can pay a fee in lieu for, for...
That's what this five is, is the in lieu?
So for, for five or, five to nine units developments, you have the option of paying a proportional fee in lieu.
That's what I thought we were talking about.
For less than five, there, in this recommendation, this is a staff recommendation, we understand that Planning Commission hasn't come to a decision on that number yet.
Okay.
But whatever number that is, that would be, below that number, there would be no affordable housing.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, that that was the number that we were still talking, we're debating over. Thank you.
Okay. So on page two, we're talking mainly about, about definitions here. So I'm not, I mean, you, I guess we can't disagree on what the definition of moderate income is. So I just want to clarify that, that's something, is that correct, that, that is, that is the definition of, of moderate income? Is that 80% and 60%?
That's our, your definition that we've discussed to date, that we've discussed 80%. And I'm just realizing that, that this one change didn't get made here. It should, it should read the area meeting income, not the King County. I thought that had made, anyway, that was the intention. But 80% for owner occupied housing and 60% for rental housing are the numbers that have been discussed for South Riverside and Nike Hill respectively. And so the, the way this is constructed is that's defined as moderate income housing. And so far, we haven't established any areas with lower income levels, but, but the, the structure allows for that when, when that time comes.
I think to your point, this, this is not a definition from Arch or King County or anything like that. This is a definition that we're setting for our code.
But, but shouldn't...
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, all right. Any, any, any comments?
Yeah, so do we at least need to put a placeholder for very low and low, or is it because we haven't discussed it, we haven't included them in the language? And it looks like Arthur wants maybe some space?
Yeah, and so I would say that we would add that when, when we provide low income housing.
So you'll notice the way this is structured, you have affordable housing is all the way over, and then we indented moderate income. And what other cities have done is, if they have different affordability levels and different, they'll do another indented term to describe the other area. So since at this time, you were using the same affordability for both neighborhood, both areas, we were able to get by with one definition. But you can always add more, as other cities have done, if in another area, you establish a different affordability level. And it would just be another subheading under affordable housing.
Good, okay. Commissioner Gabe?
I don't see how we put that into practice. I guess, being fair throughout the city, if one subarea, we have a more aggressive, you know, lower income threshold, it seems like that would be a bigger burden to a potential developer, if we're talking about new product.
I think that would, I'm sorry for buttoning it, I think that would typically maybe apply to like incentive-based stuff, to where if you got, if you did a lower income, you would get a bigger density bonus, something like that. I'm not entirely sure, but I think that's what that...
And it, and it doesn't preclude these, this is, this is not specific to either one of the, this is just a definition that's in the, in the general affordable housing section of the code 12.07. It's not specific to either one of the subareas or any of the three subareas that we're considering right now. In the event that later, at some later date, we opted to have it, to add that element to some of these subareas, we could do that and add a definition in here. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
Maybe that's confusing.
No, these, when you go to the neighborhood areas, you will see we use the term moderate income as the affordability requirement. So you are essentially defining the affordability for those neighborhoods.
I guess, but there's not a need to define other...
At this point.
Income levels.
Correct. You can always add that to this general section at another point.
Gotcha. Okay, all right. Can we move on to three? Page three? Page three. Any thoughts, any comments on page three? Commissioner Gabe?
Two quick ones off, fee in lieu of Part B under 12.07.030. Maybe I missed it, but do we need to either include the BMC 12.07.050D3 where it may spell out the actual fee, or can we include it just, or get an idea for our review? We're putting some language for how much it's going to cost, but I don't, I don't see the tie to an actual dollar amount, but maybe that changes throughout.
So, actually, I think the reference should just be to D, because D is related to in lieu, and, and also therefore, because the question you had when we talked about the in lieu is making sure that it's deposited into an account and how the money would be spent. So I think I'd want to double check that, but the reference might want to be the whole section, subsection D. And we do not put a specific dollar amount in, because section D sort of imply, gives the guidance for how to come up with a fee, and that fee can change over time, you know, into going into the future. So it creates a methodology. And then as it says in here, the fee will be determined at the time of the request, based on sort of making sure you create equal affordability, create a result equal or greater than if it had been done on site.
Okay. I guess we leave it open for now. I mean...
Okay, we're going to get, we're going to go through that section here in a minute in, in detail. So, anything else on this?
Put the page away.
We are on page three, moving to page four if there are...
Yeah, quickly on page three. I'm looking at the old one here, so I hope it says the same thing on the new one. I'm just going to read it off the old one. So we're talking about, within the RACOPNB and R4000 zoning classifications, affordable housing is required as provided in BMC, et cetera, et cetera. My question is, and I, I did not, my apologies, I did not go back and look at zoning maps for all these subareas. Are there other properties or areas in these subareas that are zoned with these same zones? And if so, we're not applying this requirement to those other properties.
That's correct.
It's specifically to these properties within our little planning area here. Does that need to be distinguished?
I think it does distinguish that somewhere in here by date, doesn't it?
Well, it did in the Riverside.
Yeah, to be safe, I think I'd like to establish it by date. I'm pretty sure there's no other, you know, conflicting zoning provision within the Queensborough, but let's make sure it's just by...
I think that's a good, good idea. Thank you, Commissioner Cecil. Anything else? Nope, okay.
Do we need to get to a consensus on our number for Part A, the five or more, four or more, three or more?
Now is the time to do that.
I think this would be the time to have that discussion.
Yeah, I was assuming if there were no comments, that we're all in agreement, but if somebody wants to...
Well, actually, let me, let me make a clarifying point there. In the, in the text box, the portion in, in red, the, this, the thresholds are also set in the subarea sections. And the, so A and B could be, and the fee in lieu is also established in the subarea section. So A and B could be removed, but we do want, that is one thing that we need to address, whether we do it here or when we get to the, the subarea sections. And, and this would give us a chance to set that threshold citywide, which is the direction we've gotten. We just haven't established, settled on a number.
It seems to me, for the sake of clarity, that this, in this, seems to be the place to do that. And then reference back to this from the subarea, because, and I think there might have been somewhere in here a conflict that is going to come up later. I'm not sure. I recall seeing something like that. So does anybody have any concerns, or anybody, I didn't hear any, but with that five or more being the criteria for the, for threshold for compliance?
I kind of want to explain my thought process for why I've been more conservative going with three, and want you to let me know if I'm out in left field. But my thought is even on a small scale, let's say we're talking about a three-unit development, in some sense, we're giving $150,000, $175,000 in value, if you're just looking at the value of a lot, for that one development, and, and we're asking for $30,000, $40,000. I know we don't have a specific number to kind of offset the affordable impact cost. So I think there is an exchange there. I don't know exactly what the right number needs to be, but to have a real impact moving forward with affordable housing, I think we should look at a, a lower number, and that's why I'm still in support of three.
I agree with Commissioner Gabe, and I think that if we have a higher threshold, we put the burden on the larger developers, when really it's a problem that everybody should be at the table trying to solve. So I'm in support of three as well.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just still on the line of, you know, the typical impacts of a short plat not meeting a lot of the SEPA thresholds and other environmental impacts. And so that, I guess I'm still in that same...
And I'm also, I appreciate Commissioner Gabe's breakdown of the increased value for a property, and so I think three or more is appropriate as well.
Okay. I, I think it, my thought on this is kind of more, I guess a little bit more grassroots. I, my experience, what I see in short plats is oftentimes land, short plat land, four lots or less in the city of Bothell, which is unusual. Most jurisdictions, or a lot of jurisdictions actually allow a short plat up to, up through nine lots. Oftentimes seems to be, it, there's less of a, it's less likely to be developed by a large developer, by a large, say, a national builder, or a large regional builder, because they're not generally, that's not their, their wheelhouse for development. What I find is it tends to be more established residents that have lived in, on these homes for, for a significant amount of time, and decide to start to develop that property on their own. And they may have kept it as an, as an investment property, knowing that at some point down the road, they would have this, this potential for growing their property and, 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 and using that as an investment. And as such, all investments are expected to grow over time in terms of the, the return you get on them. I think an upzone is one element of that return that you can get as, as a, as a, as a property owner, as an investor. And I think that, I, I think we run the risk of, of really affecting the people that we maybe don't want to affect. Even if it is a small developer that purchases the property, they're still purchasing it from these people that have by and large held on to this property, in my opinion, a smaller piece that was affordable at the time. And they are counting on that, frankly, to generate income for retirement, or whatever the case may be. And I feel pretty strongly that we should be kind of looking out for that, that, those people. And I think it makes sense that we align this with, with the short plat. I mean, a short plat is a, is a significantly different process that you have to go through for entitlement and development than a long plat or a formal plat. You don't generally, you don't always have to go through a SEPA review. You don't have a public hearing or a hearing examiner looking at this. It's an administrative decision. So it's a little bit simpler process with the idea that it's, and I don't know why that is, but I, my sense is that some part of that is due to the fact that it is a kind of a more, it's going to be more your average person coming in and trying to do this. And, and, you know, the impacts are likely less and that kind of thing. So I think that, and we don't know, frankly, what the property values are going to be, or what the portion of, you know, if, even if there is a fee in lieu that's a percentage of, of, you know, of a, of a full unit or something like that, we really don't know what that fee is going to be. So I feel like us kind of deciding in advance that, that, that we're going to put that on that smaller, you know, that, that demographic, so to speak, is, I'm a little, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I don't feel comfortable with that. I think we, these, these folks that are doing these, these projects should be exempted, like they're exempted from some of the other requirements. When you do it, when you do a short plat, you are exempted from other requirements. I think, I really feel strongly this fits right in line with that. So I'm actually in favor of, I would prefer to keep it at five or more. Obviously, we're going to, if we vote on that tonight, we're going to have a decision here. And if it turns out that we're, we're deadlocked, we, we can defer this, I think defer this particular issue until we have a odd number of commissioners here. Go ahead, Jeanie.
You make a very compelling argument. And this is me just tossing out a question, because I don't even know if it's realistic. If we were to go five or more, is there language that we could put on this requirement that would prohibit, say, somebody breaking in themselves into smaller LLCs and taking advantage of this by doing in, in, you know, aggregate neighboring properties? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and that, that actually does happen. People do avoid the short plat, or avoid doing a, a long plat by dividing, in some cases, dividing property into two short plats. It's, and currently, our code doesn't have a, a restriction against doing that.
So how would we go about creating that? Is that even realistic? Because I, I think you make a very compelling argument. So how do we protect something like that from happening?
I think we'd have to take that under advisement and come back to you with some analysis of that, unless anyone else has, has any...
Like give a half an hour of your time to it? Not days and days?
Well, if, if the commission can't make a decision on this, we will have to at least con... least continue deliberations to future date, and, and we could come back to you with some, some thoughts on that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I throw out an idea?
Please.
So, it seems like we're heading more towards the three. What, this is just a, I guess philosophically, we're, we're giving them value by the rezone in theory, right? Because we're, we're upzoning. In some cases, they may get an extra lot. In some cases, they may not. So, is there, is there some way we can condition the requirement that if they get, if the rezone, so they have to do a little exercise, kinda like the old PUDs, but if they, if they laid out their site under the 9600 and then they laid it out under the 7200 and they got an additional lot, then that, then that affordability requirement would, would apply? Is that a reasonable approach?
That's something else that I think we'd have to do some analysis and.
Because I don't think it's the intent for, it's not the intent for us to put an affordability requirement on someone who, even though they got an upzone, they're not getting any value out of the upzone, if that makes sense.
I agree.
Is that correct? I mean.
Yeah, I'd be 100% supportive of doing that. Now, I, we, you provided the chart last time, David, of East Riverside Drive, and I'm trying to remember back, but I think there was some that went from two to three. I don't know that there were any that stayed at three, but we didn't look at anything for Shelton View, so.
But, yeah, yeah, but well, also, we're, this is a general.
Right.
Section of the, of the, of the code here, so.
I mean, to be clear, I'm, I'm still for five, but, but I'm, I guess I'm looking out for the small guy, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna stick him with this, with the, with the two lot or a three lot, even though they, they're not, they're not getting anything out of it, then, then I see that as, we're not really, we're not really doing what we set out to do. We're, we're trying to give value and then capture some of that. We're not trying to.
Yeah. I just, I just think that there, it seems to me that it's in the spirit of what we're, you know, city of Bothell frankly, that, that when, again, I really feel even that upzone is a component of the investment that this, this small landowner has put into their property. And when they achieve that, I feel like we're, it's like getting a raise and then having it heavily taxed to where it, you know, almost made it not worth it in the first place. So, I guess my, I, I just would really caution against applying that in, in any way at this level. Go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I would also caution anybody thinking that, you know, their property is gonna be upzoned in the future. I mean, that, I mean, you buy it, it's zoned at a certain time, you know? I mean, you can speculate in many things in life, but I don't think you should expect it to be upzoned at some point in time, but. And I also know that we have a dire need for affordable housing. And so, I, I guess I'd, I'd be interested to know, like, what kinda numbers we're talking about. If somebody goes, you know, and puts three new homes on at a value of, say, $700,000 a home, like what kind of fee in lieu, kinda ballpark are we talking about? If we're talking about an undue burden? I mean, maybe it is, but if we're, if we're giving a person this much value, what are we asking for in return to be able to meet these affordability requirements?
Good, yeah, I hear you. Let me make a recommendation, just for the sake of time. We, we've had a good, great point brought up by Commissioner Zornz and a great point brought up by Commissioner Cecil about potential future research on this. I, I think considering that we're apart on this, and I can't quite tell whether it was three, two, three, three, or four, two, to be honest with you, but I think that's a significant number that it probably is worthwhile to have this. Dave, if you could do that additional research and advise us on if there is some kinda middle ground, like the two commissioners mentioned, I would prefer to, to defer that if we could. So, I'd like to know everybody else's thoughts.
So, I have a, I have a question. Just because we put this as a citywide policy doesn't mean that every subarea has to be the same. We could get to East Riverside, and if there was a couple of examples of an undue burden on a homeowner, we could adjust it for that situation or for that, for that small zone? Is, is that correct?
Yes, it's, you could do that. One reason the staff recommendation is for five is from a processing standpoint, it, it does make it a lot easier to keep track of this if we use an established threshold that we have, like the short plat, but, but that is an option that's available.
But we're, we're discussing general affordable housing, though, so we're, we're not, this is not delving into the specific areas. So, we're trying to set a, kind of a structure to hang our requirements from, or general requirements.
That's a general question to you, and I think the point that was just made is you have a choice of going either way. If you do land on a, hey, this feels right citywide, then it can stay in this section. That's why we're talking about it here, because the conversation to date has felt like it's been sort of a general, universal. But if you got to the point where you finally decided, well, maybe it should be a little bit different, that's when you would move it, you would, that's why we had it also in the, the neighborhood sections. So, that's something after you talk about all three neighborhoods, we might come back to you and say, maybe it's a neighborhood versus a general. But at this point, you've been talking about it more general level. That's why we have it in the general section. But you do have that flexibility.
And, and Arthur, what is, what is the, if you had to say what, what's typical amongst other jurisdictions, can you refresh us on what generally is done here?
Sure, and it's been around the map, and this is where, again, part of the reason why we, I think we said from the get-go, the community, the neighborhoods you're looking at now are a little different than some of the other neighborhoods you might look at in the future. So, the experience we've seen has been Kirkland, which is like four. Some of the older, older cities who've had the programs around longer, we were using 10, because it was sort of like when you trigger one. And, but they can't change their rules once they set them. And Kirkland saw the result of people coming in at nine, sort of the concern of you. So, that's why Kirkland went lower. And then some cities have no minimum, but those are typically in areas where they're multifamily zones, and so while it's universal, you're not expecting small projects. Here, you're dealing with neighborhoods where you may see some small projects. And so, there are different experiences in different cities. The lowest we've seen is Kirkland, and they did it specifically because they saw what happened in some other communities. No right or wrong answer on these, but that's just sort of why you see different thresholds in different cities.
Any thoughts, Mr. Commissioner Lee?
I guess, could we, could we maybe ask for a hand vote of, of who's at three and who's at five? And can I see where we stand, or, or do you guys should weigh in on that?
We, we can. I, I guess we could certainly do that. I, I wanna make sure that we also, if, if there are viable ideas for addressing this to make it work for, you know, to make it work at, at another level, that we should make sure we do that. And I think we should do that if we're gonna defer, or if we're gonna allow, ask the staff to do some research on the two, two ideas that were posed here, we should probably do that on the general and both of the, or all, I guess it's three subareas technically. But yeah, if people wanna weigh in in general on where they stand on five versus three or four, I, I, we haven't, go ahead.
Okay, so I don't, I have zero experience in, and, you know, a garden spot, yes, but not a, a piece of property, breaking it up into pieces. So, logistically, why would setting, if we were to just come to a halfway point of four and above, what would be the problem with that coming from wanting five?
The, the, I think is, well, David, do you wanna address that as far as, I, I guess mainly it's because of the, that it fits with, the short plat is more than four unit, or less than, less than five units, and a, a formal subdivision is, is more than four. So, it kinda falls in line with that. And I just, just seem, my thought is that it just seems that those four and belows tend to be the, the smaller property owners. So, if you put it at four, you're still kinda drawing that line between, you know, the, you're still falling on the other side of the line between a short plat and a formal subdivision. I don't think I said that very well.
Well, and from our standpoint, it's just a, sort of a clarity issue, that we, we know that short plats don't have an affordability requirement and long, long plats do.
So, I guess, I think we know where we stand on who feels which way, other than you, Commissioner Zornz, you didn't weigh in on whether you think it should be three, four, or five, or some other number.
I think I wanna wait and see if they can tell us whether or not we can put some conditions on it. Because if we can put some conditions on it, then I'm, I might lean five. If we can't put conditions on it, I'm gonna lean three.
Everybody, anybody wanna weigh in on that? I, I tend to, well, I'll let everybody else speak first. Anybody okay with asking the staff to do some research? Go ahead.
Just a quick question, looking at our agenda. The next time we pick this up, I think, is May 11th. If we were to have another meeting, do we have something else to fill that meeting space if we were able to close this out tonight? I know the goal initially was that we would get through this, and I don't wanna rush it if there's still some items we have to iron out, but.
You mean, another agenda item to?
Yeah.
If, if all you have to do is settle on that, that issue?
Correct.
Well, I think that will take a little, a little time, and there is one thing that, that didn't get on the calendar, the work program calendar, is that that will be your first meeting in May.
Under the, under the desks.
Our screen is going. And so, that would be the meeting that you would do your elections at, so that.
The 11th is, Dave?
I'm sorry?
The 11th?
May 11th, yes.
May 11th, okay. I don't know if our mics are on or not. I can't really tell.
Just yell.
Yeah. So, that being said, we, we do have an open spot on the 11th where, do you want us to hold off for a second?
No, you're good.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, we do have another session where this could be, we do have the time, it looks like, to do this additional research. And I frankly feel like if everybody, show of hands on whether or not we're okay to, to allow them to do research, those two ideas. What I would suggest, though, is that, and there may be other issues that also get deferred in the same way as we go through this, let's, let's agree at the end of the meeting, if possible, that, that those are the only outstanding issues, so that we're basically saying, hey, we're good with all of this, so that I think staff has some certainty that we're not gonna come back and revisit all this stuff again on the 11th. Is that, is that reasonable?
That's fair.
Let's say, show of hands on, on deferring this issue for the time being to allow staff to do the research on the two suggestions by Commissioners Zornz and Cecil. And I'll also ask, is it clear what those recommend, or those suggestions were? Dave and Bruce, are we?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. Show of hands on, on deferring that.
I think we have one more question from.
And I just had a question about the, I had a comment about, like, getting a ballpark. I'm trying to understand the, I don't, maybe that was Commissioner Cecil's, but how much money we're talking about is a hardship for a property that we're, some, is there a percentage? I mean, I know that's kind of a hard to come up with number. I'm sorry to delay the, but I kinda wanna understand the, what kinda number I'm looking at.
Arthur.
What the fee in lieu is gonna be. Do we have any?
I do have that slide. Yeah, if you can put that slide back up. We did talk about this some at the study session, and we're gonna try to put this slide up. And for ownership units, if you see there, you were settling on the 80% level of affordability. We calculated what sort of the gap is, and we do sort of a very similar calculation for in lieu fee. So, the number you're seeing there, about $115,000, that would probably be the right ballpark. It might be a little lower, a little bit higher.
Okay, thanks.
And that's for, so if you had a fractional requirement, it would be a fraction of a number in that ballpark.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
I was just pointing out that he had a comment.
Oh, okay, okay. I was looking the wrong way. Okay, so, show of hands on if we wanna defer this issue for the time being. Okay, it looks, it looks unanimous, so let's go ahead and do that, and we'll do, do our very best to make up our minds on this on the 11th for sure. Okay, and I believe that we are on page three still, and we've discussed that issue. Is there, are there any other comments on page three? Page four. Anyone? I have a couple of quick things here, if nobody else does. Item five, or excuse me, D5, where it says, at the last sentence, "The interior finish and quality of construction of the affordable unit shall at a minimum be comparable to entry-level rental or ownership housing in the city." Seems like a really, really hard thing to define, and I, I would hazard, hazard against backing somebody into a corner where, a builder into a corner where we're trying to ask the staff to dictate to a, a developer what a comparable entry-level rental or ownership housing is. And I think what we're looking for, it seems to me, is to make it as cost-effective as possible for builders to provide affordable housing without unduly affecting, unduly affecting the neighborhood. It seems to be more of an exterior issue to me, that I think we should allow developers to, and, and builders to allow the market to dictate what they need to do on the inside of these units. That's my perspective.
If I could respond to that, I think this is sort of a protection thing. There's a whole range of builders out there, and this is actually the language we developed with builders. That's why we came up with in the city, so that kinda gives you a geographic area that if you wanted to say, you know, look at some other plans for other more entry-level products, if you wanted to challenge on that. As administering this, we haven't, fortunately, we haven't had to deal with it very often. But occasionally, there are times like you don't necessarily, you know, if it's an ownership product, you know, you could have said the HUD standards, you know, sort of minimum standards and stuff. But this was language we actually developed, working with several builders in another, in a couple of other cities. And so, I think we found this sort of works, and it gives a local perspective. And, and again, like I said, it's, it's not one that we go overboard administering, but at least provides some protection if we see somebody sort of really trying to do very, very, very low-grade finishes.
But, but if that, if that's what achieves affordability, why, why would we dictate? I, I guess my question is, the inside of the house is the inside of the house. Is there, is there some?
Because if you have poor quality and it's falling apart and people have to repair it all the time?
I'm not thinking, I wasn't, I guess I wasn't looking this as, as a quality issue, as looking at as a, more of a finish issue. And we've got building code that determines.
Not really.
What, what the quality on the inside. I mean, we have, we have building code that determines what, how you wire a house and, and that sort of thing.
But this is more like on finishes. Do you put a cabinet that's gonna hold up for a few years? Do you put in cabinets?
It just seems hard to, really hard to define or enforce, frankly. I don't know how you do it as a staff. You would say you're, you're in violation of item D5 of, I guess I'd be curious to know what the other commissioners think.
Quick question, Arthur. So, does, does entry level, does that mean compared to other affordable projects?
No, we're implying entry-level market.
In the city?
In the city.
And so, how do you, how do you go and find one of those?
Hmm?
How, how do you go and find? I think you had mentioned you could look at maybe some plans from another.
Right, exactly.
To compare to. How do you locate?
Or even that building potentially. I mean, if it's, if it's generally another apartment building, and all of a sudden you see the finishes in the, and it's a basic apartment building and they're using pretty standard finishes, and then all of a sudden the affordable unit have a completely different finish, you might say that. If it's a marble countertop, you're not gonna worry about that. But if it's not, you know, so, you're right. It is not the easiest thing. I mean, we always had, we have tried to deal with this, and this is the language, as some level of protection for the public side and the public benefit side, that we came up with, working with the private sector. You don't have to have it in there, but then we would have nothing to be able to have a conversation with somebody over.
So, another, I guess, follow-up, does arts typically get pulled in for issues like this, or is this something that typically can be taken care of? And I know there's probably a variety of different cities, so, and they all have different capabilities, but is this something that you get pulled into often?
Well, we're typically the ones dealing with the contracts in the first place, so we are the ones already usually working with the builder. We're the ones who see their plans, because, you know, the designation of the units and things like that. So, we're often already involved. But it probably on the finish, we would probably, if we thought there was a finish issue, we'd bring in the staff to see, you know, we'd ask what are other plans, and we have, and we'd involve the city staff with that, if that came up.
So, this gets maybe back into the, the process, but is there, in most cities, is there typically, I mean, are all the inspectors trained on this affordability and stuff? Or is there typically a, one or two inspectors at the city that kinda specialize in it and are familiar with this, or how does that typically work?
No, the, this is not so much an inspector level issue. This is more of a plan review type issue, and then if we wanted, we'd ask for the material, the spec material list. So, generally, it's planners who are trained on this, not so much the field inspectors.
So, finishes and whatnot? So finishes and whatnot, those are required for permits? Is that correct? What counter finish you're going to have? I mean, is that?
I don't, not that I'm aware of.
Not always, no.
Okay, so potentially in these kinds of projects, there might be another level of detail that's required?
Exactly.
Okay.
I, well, I, what do the other commissioners think about that?
So, I'm, I'm curious, Arthur, was, was this language written out of a need from a problem that was, was occurring? Was there, was there a chronic problem with under, underbuilt interiors?
I can say, I can't say it was a chronic problem, but I would say that we had occasion.
Can I add something perhaps? I do most of the contracts that come through for these projects, both, both ownership and rental. And what happens is pretty simple, is that when the properties are ready for avail, available for occupancy, then we meet with the leasing agents on site or we meet with the sales agents on site and we walk through the homes. And in my five years there, we've never seen a problem with this. But if we ever did, then as Arthur said, then we would talk to the city about, you know, what to do about it. Or we, you know, maybe first approach the developer and, but, you know, we'd be talking really about something like they put up plywood instead of finished wood or paracabour or something. I mean, it would have to be pretty extreme.
It seems to me that at that point where you're got a finished unit and you're walking through it to look at it and you decide that that finish isn't appropriate, then it's a little late.
Right, no, we, this would be something you'd look at based on the initial level and part of it is, you know, developers have built around and you sort of get a feel for what they do and we ask them what finish package are they planning on using? So we can just ask them what kind of finish package they're using and they're around and they'll describe it and we'll say, okay, that's, that's fine. We're not, we're not trying to make this an owner's process here, but there's just enough wide range of builders out there that once you start a mandatory type program, we're asking all to participate, some people will, and again, especially here where you're talking about ownership housing, that there is a level of, I used to do development, there's a level of finish that's a little bit higher for ownership than it is for typical rental and even for entry level ownership, it's generally a little bit higher level finishes because of, it's an ownership product.
And keep in mind also that they want to sell the affordable units, they don't want to hold on to them any longer than they have to.
Well, and that would be, I think to my point is that let's let the market determine what, what needs to be done on the inside from a quality standpoint and, you know, I mean, the buyer is making a decision, in a, in a purchasing situation, the buyer is making a decision about, can I tolerate this level of finish or if you want to call it quality or whatever? And if they do make that decision, then they're also making the decision that I may need to do some work on this house down the road. If it's a rental, it's really not an issue because if the, if the owner puts in poor quality, they're going to be replacing it when it fails. So, I guess from my perspective, I, I would, this, this worries me from a number of different areas and I frankly don't think this should be, I really don't feel like this should be in here. I think you might have, be able to have a more general statement about quality of construction, but I still feel like we've got building codes that determine, that determine quality of construction and we've got products out there that, you know, they're, say you want to look at carpet, what called a quality carpet or what kind of level of carpet do we put in? Less expensive carpets made for a reason and it gets used periodically. I'm not sure that it's our job to, to dictate that. So, I'd be curious to know what the rest of the, what the rest of the commission thinks about that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm fine leaving it in, but I do appreciate your concerns about trying to get, get to, to go down to a micro level on, on developers who are trying to create affordable housing. But I guess, I mean, I've been in a lot of rental units in my time that are, that there are things that are, they're in bad shape, but the owner doesn't necessarily have to take care of. Old countertops or whatever, it's not, it's not a broken sink or a toilet or anything. And then I guess maybe one word that, I don't know, what might be worth throwing in here is be comparable to new entry level rental or ownership housing. Because if you, we don't have any affordable housing in the city of Bothell. I mean, we, we're just developing this, so I wouldn't want it to be compared to a, you know, a rental unit that was 20 years old or whatever, but maybe that's self explanatory.
Any other thoughts?
I sort of like having something to fall back on, but when we looked at this two weeks ago, I had the same opinion that it's undefinable, so I'm okay with, with removing it. I think you made a good point.
Anybody else?
I guess, I, I mean, I love specific language, but I feel, and you may tell, you could tell me if I'm misunderstanding this, that this is vague enough so that if there is something that flags you like a shoddy appliance or, or substandard hinges on your, on your cabinetry, you can at least point to this and say, I want a correction here because this doesn't look like it's meeting the standards it ought to meet.
Probably the example that, and you, thank you for bringing it up, carpet finish. There's a wide range of carpet finish and some are not considered really ownership quality. I mean, they're not real high quality, but there is a standard below what you expect to see in ownership. And we have seen builders who will be building a subdivision and they will have these finishes for the consumer to pick and then they say for the affordable ones, this is your pick. And then we don't mind that, but we did have some builders who sometimes put what they put in there would not have met the HUD standards.
Why don't we, I, I am all in favor of basing it on something that's definable. If there's a HUD standard, why don't we just rely on that?
And that's what we had and the builders, sort of when we worked with them, kind of thought this language was okay. And maybe that's because that's not so much rental. I mean, HUD standards are usually related to owner occupancy. That's the standard I would probably look, if I had to challenge someone, that's probably the book I would pull out and say, have you really, you know, for ownership. If I've had, if I ever felt the need to challenge, that's probably what I would turn to for ownership housing. But I don't know if this was because some builders wanted a little more flexibility. I mean, builders want certainty and they want flexibility. So I don't know quite how we, this is a long time we came up with this language and it is pretty consistent language in almost every program we've done.
Okay. Well, why don't we let the rest, the commissioners that want to weigh in on this issue that haven't? Let's do that. Is there anybody else?
So, a quick question. So, is, is the HUD standard, is that a bar that's too high for, for rental product?
I'd have to research it more.
Okay, do you have a sense? I mean, I guess I would agree if we're going to stick them to something would be good. And the other thing is that, you don't want to create a situation for the city staff where they're now having to dig through all these plans and find something that they can hang their hat on. I think that's problematic for, you know, typically over, you know, overworked staff. So, I guess my thought was, can we, can we throw the HUD standard in there? Does that make sense? Sounds like it might for ownership. I don't know though for rental, if that's something that's reasonable.
I was going to suggest that since there are a couple of other items that we're going to come back to you with, with some further analysis, this is one that we could look into that particular question and we can also consult with our, our building division and, and get their level of comfort, although I think we really would be relying on Arch staff to, to enforce this and implement it.
Was there, are any of the commissioners want to weigh in?
I, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Clark and that it is ambiguous, but I, I would also say that I think it's more on the ownership housing and the rental housing because ultimately it's going to be the private homeowner that's purchasing this, that's going to be motivated to get into a house. There's not a lot of affordable housing and so they might just say, okay, I'll sign on the line, I finally get a house and then they're not going to have the, potentially not have the ability to, to fix the problems. Whereas a rental unit, somebody can just move out and then it's on the, the owner of the building to fix it. And so if we adopted the HUD standards for the, the, the purchase housing, then, then I think we'd be okay and we could probably leave this out for the rental property.
You read my mind, I actually was thinking the same thing that I, and what Arthur said made sense to me is, the other point about that I think is that if, if, if the rental housing is left out and it's done of a quality that isn't sufficient, what that's going to mean is it's going to wear out more quickly than others and then they're going to, they're going to be, you know, I, I think, it's, it's the owner's expense to go back and do that, the apartment owner's expense, not a, not a homeowner's expense. So, I actually would be okay, and we can either defer this or we can make a decision right now. If we, maybe, maybe the thing to do is give a recommendation that if, if we're all in agreement with this, that on the ownership housing, utilize the HUD standard for, for that to give it some specificity and then on the rental, maybe not have a, have a, a specific policy, but have this only apply to ownership and have it reference the HUD. So, we could either make that decision now or defer and ask, maybe it's a good idea to have, have some thought put into it by the building department and, you know.
And I would like to check around because one of the things builders like is consistency and I'd like to check with Seattle and see what they've done in their programs.
Okay.
As you saw in the newspaper today, they're launching their stuff more explicitly now and they probably have given thought to this as well, so I'd like to consult with them as well.
Is everybody okay with deferring it and allowing them to look into that kind of narrow aspect of things?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like, I guess if you're looking into it, I'd also like you to look into the, the question of, is this going to put a lot more, a lot, a lot more work into the builders? Are they going to have to follow these really defined guidelines? Whereas before they could just do what they knew was right and now they're going to have to check a bunch of boxes? So if you could, if you could check that and find out maybe what the consensus is with the builders as far as those HUD standards and meeting them? Is, is that a clear question or?
It's a clear question, I don't have a clear answer up the top of my head.
No, I'm not saying for today, but if we're going to look into it, it just seems, like we, we don't want to put a burden on builders when, when this ambiguous term might work for them.
So, so one, if I could make a comment, keep in mind, I mean, we had one city that the council debated this and then they said it's going to be the same quality. They, they don't want it to be any lower quality, the affordable units and, you know, we are allowing smaller units, we are allowing, you know, we've tried to do a ratio of value, you know, benefit to what we're asking in exchange. So, you know, I, I have watched builders who have done whatever they can to cut corners thinking the market will just, it'll work, don't worry, no matter what the price is, it'll work. And I've seen some pretty, I've, I've seen some builders take some pretty weird approaches to addressing affordability. They don't seem to put the same level of detail and attention and I think that's part of the concern is, is that it is still housing and no, you can't just do whatever you want and assume it'll work. And this is just sort of saying, we've given you a lot of benefits and we're giving you some room to also help offset it, but this analysis didn't assume we were getting a lower quality finishes for the affordable when we did the analysis. But that's why we've always been sympathetic to doing this, but I have seen some builders who really produce a product that if we didn't have a way to check it, and it's usually more around the unit design than it is finishes, but it is definitely an issue that we have seen some builders really take a, a pretty, a, a pretty limited approach to dealing with the affordable units.
Thanks. I, I should clarify that I have no problem with the way it's written, I'm just trying to, to move toward consensus and so I think that I propose that with the rental units with, with that in mind, so.
So are we okay to allow, just do a little bit more research, everybody show of hands and then come back on the 11th? Okay. So that's the second issue that we're going to.
Could we also do a show of hands of who would just support this outright?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. What, so why don't you state what you're?
I, I'm just saying, as written, who would support that, just leaving it in and then moving on?
Oh, sure.
Versus, versus doing the more work and potentially taking it out when it's already used in, in all the other area cities and it is kind of a norm for the builders?
Sure, yeah. Show of hands for who would be in favor of leaving this unchanged on the, as, as it stands now? So we're 50/50. So we'll.
Thank you.
Hopefully the 11th will have a, will have an odd number of people, so if we can come up with it. Okay, so we'll move on from that. The second thing I had on this particular page was the next item, E5, E, availability of the affordable units shall be available for occupancy in a timeframe comparable to the availability of the rest of the dwelling units in the development. Arthur, is there, is there some definition around that? I, I think that's great, but what does that mean? Like in the same year or the same month or you're going to, percentage wise, you're going to, you're going to release affordable units? If you have 10 affordable units out of 100, you know?
So, I'm going to refer you to page five.
Okay.
To the covenant agreement. And I believe we have in here, for, section C, phasing of, you know, what will be included in the affordability covenant. And you'll see on the second line has affordability duration, phasing of construction. So, that's, we deal with this on a project by project basis. If it's a big multi-family single building, not much of an issue. If it is a subdivision, it can be an issue. And so, and it can vary. If it's a small one, it may not be that big an issue, but typically what we've done in subdivisions is we'll create some, we'll work with the builder, look at what their construction schedule is, look at where they want to put the affordable units and try to come up with a phasing plan that sort of says by X number of market rate units, you'll have this many of the affordable done. And we don't like to have a set process because we try to respect building path as well, but make sure they don't like build all the market and leave the affordable for flat. In fact, as an example, to just show you what builders will do is a large master plan development had a requirement for five sites to have affordable units. And we had a midpoint check in, but we didn't have a final point check in. And in that project, the final site was supposed to have 100 affordable units out of like a 1,200 unit development and the builder never built the last 100 units. It's just still sitting there five years after the market rates done because we didn't have a phasing requirement. We did for midpoint and he met that, but he didn't, we didn't have another triggering point for the final site. And so we need to do something to, so we try to balance those two. That's why we try not to say it has to be exactly proportional, but we always address it as needed in the, in the affordability covenant.
Okay, that's satisfactory to me. I, I, I recall that we talked about affordable housing project in Kirkland up by the parking right there on 70th and I do recall that those affordable units were the very last units built on that entire project, so I see where, where this concern is valid.
But that was agreed, I mean, that was, we had a reason for doing it in that case and that was fine. Because we had it all planned out, but that's what we're saying, we need to sit down and make sure that we don't have happen in that development up in one of the master plan developments of course.
Thank you. That's, I don't have any more questions than four. Are we okay to move on to page five? Page five, any, any comments? Go ahead.
I'm looking at the first item, computation for parking stalls may be reduced for up to 50% per affordable dwelling unit. Can we define that? I'm concerned that we'll be penalizing families that need to be able to park a car and can't. Is there a way to, I know in an effort to avoid appodments, that we established one parking spot per bedroom. Is there a way of adding a requirement of, and I don't know if this will work, with a minimum of one parking spot per unit? So if you have a three bedroom apartment, they're still required to have a?
That?
Or a two bedroom, you know, I, I'm just concerned that we're going to end up without a, I guess with this, if we were to have a three bedroom apartment, we would still end up with 1.5 parking spots if we were to use the standard of one parking spot per bedroom.
Well, or you don't?
I'm just concerned, what's the mechanism for making sure that people can still park their cars?
So the, the standard is, is detailed in the text box on the previous page. So, the, in, in these, the sub areas that we're considering right now, the, the parking requirement is, for single family housing is, is three parking spaces per dwelling unit, including driveway space. And for multifamily, it's essentially 2.2 spaces per unit, one space per unit, or two spaces per unit and one space for every five units as I guess, one guest space. So, if we kept the guest space, you know, the same, it would, this 50% would drop it down to, essentially to 1.2 per unit. So you'd still have a, maintain a, a parking space per unit. And I also wanted to clarify that as indicated at the bottom of the top text box on the top of page five, we, we had this discussion on the South Riverside area and the, at least, the direction that we took away was that, that there wasn't any interest in applying any of these, these modifications there. So, so this really is applying to the Nike Hill area. So, so this really is applying to the Nike Hill area where we're dealing with multifamily housing. And these, and we're really put in there for your discussion to, to make sure that, you know, if, if you feel the same way. That, that these kind of reductions aren't appropriate even in a multifamily situation. We just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to weigh in on that.
Other comments on page five?
Yeah, just on, on that note, Gene, I really appreciate you bringing that up. That does seem, I'd love to revisit that some more. It does seem odd. It just seems like it's going to push people to street parking wise anytime you're reducing parking requirements.
Is, Dave, is this suggesting that it's not necessarily the affordable unit that loses the parking spot? It's just that the overall parking calculation for the neighborhood will reduce, be reduced by 50% for the, to reflect, for the affordable units. Is that, is that right?
Yes, I believe so. That, that this would say that if you have a 100-unit apartment complex, 10 affordable units. The 90 of those units would still be parked at the, at the 2.2 spaces per unit. The 10 would be calculated at the 1.2. So it'd be a relatively small reduction in the parking requirement.
And it wouldn't necessarily apply to the affordable unit because they're.
No, and then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would just be an overall reduction in parking spaces. So it's a, it's a, it's a, essentially it's a, it's a break to a builder, I guess, for, for providing affordable housing that they don't have to. Parking takes up space, I guess, is one of the.
Takes up space and it's very expensive to build.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Is this, it seems like it's not, I don't know that it's not applicable to detached, single-family housing, the parking. But is that, Arthur, what in your experience, is, is this a doable thing in a subdivision?
So in a subdivision, I mean, I think it can apply in a subdivision as well. But you still need to have at least one parking space. And we have seen in some of our, again, up in the master plan communities, we have seen where the parking has been reduced down to these sort of one per space in some cases for, for affordable units. So we have seen them do that.
I guess in, to me, in a, in a subdivision, it doesn't really seem like you're getting a lot of bang for your buck by not putting a full width driveway in your garage. I, I don't, I don't, I don't see where the, I think you would lose more value than you saved by not paving 10 more feet of driveway. Am I, am I missing something?
They may take away the garage completely and have to not build a garage space because the garage is not typically a requirement. It's just a parking space. So you may see that, but that's not a reduction in count. That's, you know, but usually if you have a house and you're trying to do two off-street spaces, one of, you know, what we've seen, I think is more common is we get a one-car garage for affordable units with an apron.
And is that acceptable in the spirit of the exteriors matching?
Yeah.
What the other?
It's the finish. It's the finish of the exterior, so.
I don't, I don't like it for subdivisions overall, just a general comment, but.
Seems to be more applicable. Go ahead.
I, I know we'll get into the specifics in the individual sub areas, but I don't think it's even applicable in this case for rentals just because it's not necessarily transit-oriented development up on Nike Hill. I know it's a major thoroughfare for roads, but I believe there's only one bus route that goes up 228. So it, I don't know. I just think that these type of incentives make sense when you're downtown or somewhere with lots of options, not sort of isolated.
And so that's one, again, just like we said earlier, this could be one, in the end, you decide you want to apply on, on a neighborhood scale. And I think what David was saying earlier, we sort of took the interpretation that we didn't see you using these in South Riverside. You may want to come to a similar conclusion. In that case, then when we come back and do the final drafting, we will make it so that these might still be in for general consideration. But we put language in the neighborhood saying, these don't apply to these neighborhoods.
Okay.
It seems to me too that maybe they're more applicable to certain zones and not other zones as opposed to sub areas. Maybe it's, and maybe you can keep it still in the general section, but hey, for multifamily zones. Because I, in those examples you're talking about, I agree. I don't, it's not like a huge drastic reduction in parking for a 100-unit project, you know? But in a subdivision, I would assume you've got a, you know, for each unit, you're 50% for each unit, for each lot. I think that's, that's a significant hit to that lot in terms of its value and, and I think even, even to its exterior parents compared to other homes, so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Could, could you keep this language that you have here and just add, and without defining each area, whether you're going to apply it or not? Just put the condition of how many existing bus routes have to be within walkable distance as a criteria of when that gets to be applied? I mean, choose your bus route.
You could, yeah. I mean, the question is, yes, you could do that or you could, when you're doing, and, and if you're doing citywide, that might be where you need to have a provision like that. If you, you know, but we're not having the citywide conversation right now. So that might be a really good way to do it for citywide. And the question is, again, in the interest of, you know, we're going to come back and do citywide at some point in next year or so.
Okay.
The question is, if in these neighborhoods, all the reasons you're giving, you're saying, because my recollection is, is that like, because these are rezones for the open space, you were saying, no. Because you don't need the relaxation for the open space because you're working within the zoning. If you go citywide and you're going above a base zoning, then you might need to have those provisions to help accommodate the extra units. So you could just conclude, you know, so that's, I think I keep going back every once or, at least once a, a meeting, I go, you're dealing with some very unique kind of areas that a citywide conversation might feel different than what you're trying to do here. So you may want to, in the interest of trying to move these ones forward, say, how do we want to treat these issues just for these neighborhoods? And then we'll note your idea when we go do a citywide look to sort of use that approach.
Is there a way of flagging some of these items?
That's.
Being, I mean, now.
That's what I'm saying. We should probably do that as, in our notes or something. Make sure we're noting these conversations and say, when we do citywide, let's come back to that idea.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm assuming, Arthur, that since these are. Design requirement, relaxation, that we can add these citywide at a later time?
Correct.
That's not a problem? Okay.
So what does, where does that leave us right now? Are we, I noticed your notes up above say that these are put in as placeholders. Does that mean they get removed for now with a note for later or they get?
We, that's your choice. So in other words, if you think none of these should apply for the two particular areas we're looking at now. We could just, you know, have a placeholder of the introduct, you know, we could take this section out and make it a placeholder for when we come back. And have a conversation when you're looking at a larger kind of citywide approach.
Question. If we add it now for say Nike Hill, which it may be more applicable to, and then we want us for some reason, take it out later, is that a no-no?
You're starting to get into gray area territory.
Gray. I'm a gray, I like gray. I like gray territory. Okay. I guess for the sake of simplicity, it seems like we ought to just table this until the citywide.
Leave them out.
Discussion. Yeah. I think we're just going to get into too many.
Any, any other thoughts on that? I think we're talking about both one and two. Commissioners Hampton and Zornz, any thoughts on that? Okay. Okay, yeah, I'd be fine with that too. So it looks like we have a consensus that for now, we're going to leave these out and kind of leave a. I'm not sure, your notes or, you know, reminder, keep it in our heads that we may come back to this at some point. I do want to clarify though, we are dealing, when you say citywide, I mean, this is a citywide section.
This is a citywide section, but you're only applying in two small areas. So you don't have to deal with everything right now.
Okay, I got you.
If you do, it creates a place where if you create citywide, they'll go in here.
Right, gotcha. Okay. Okay, any other on page five? I, I had one thing or two things. The 12 point XX point O two O, is that a misprint or was that intended to be on 12, third line of alternative compliance? Is, should there be an actual code?
Yeah, on the revised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. I switched back to my, okay, so you did fix that. And then down below. Item B under that same section, is there supposed to be a colon and a bullet point there or something? You say following criteria, but then. Where, what, what criteria are you referring to? Is it the next line? It is? So it sounds like that should be either.
Just that one criteria?
Yeah.
Bullet?
I think.
Criterion.
Or just say, the director made his discretion, alternative compliance that meets, must achieve an affordable housing benefit to the city. I mean. Yeah, yeah, it sounds like you're going to have a list and all of a sudden there's nothing there but that one point. So I think that could be combined into one sentence, I guess. Anything else on page five?
Oh, Eric, real quick.
Oh, sure.
Okay. So where did we leave off on the parking? Sorry, I, I, did we kind of just leave it?
We, we, there was a consensus that we were going to leave any discussion about parking, any, any credit or reduction on parking and recreation area until we address this in a more general way. Because it really isn't applicable in these two sub areas. Is that?
We're going to do a deeper dive on the citywide stuff.
So we're basically going to take it out of here though?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, page six. Any? Any thoughts on page six? Any comments?
Yeah, I got one on part C, number one. I, I don't know if I like the word unacceptable. It seems kind of harsh. I was maybe like disproportionate or something like that?
I agree.
That would work.
Looks, looks good to me.
Is there a consensus there?
Yes.
This was a change from previously was undue and that was questioned.
So we'll change our mind again next.
Oh, shoot, I'm on the wrong one.
I do too. That's a good, good word. Anybody else? I have a couple of quick items and under D, where you talk about the director having the payment, the, so determine the payment obligation. Is that something that gets redone for every project? It seems like you could put something in place. It would be like a, more like a, a GFC or, or an impact fee that would be determined annually or something. Is that?
Right. So the way we've drafted it, that would generally be the approach we would recommend is that you do an analysis and you let that sort of carry over for any project for a period of time.
Could we, could we clarify that in this section, do you think, and just say that, that whatever the analysis is, whatever the decision is, will apply to all projects within a given timeframe or something? Is that?
So the one question on that front, let me ask, is, is that? If you do, this is general.
Uh huh.
Is that, do you use the same for single, do we do the same for all ownership housing? And we could. I mean, I think in Redmond, we pretty much have always looked at the same approach. So I guess we could do that. Kirkland sort of said, we really want that some kind of development like single-family Kirkland is just so valuable now. They wanted us to look at that differently than if it was a multifamily building.
It could be, it could be still look that you could have a different number for multifamily versus single-family. I'm just suggesting that we.
Make it clear that it's sort of not every project you have to redo it.
Exactly, yeah.
Is there some, is it published on a regular basis? Is there?
I don't know if I'd say it's published, but we don't hide the information per se. And, you know, we usually work, when we do that, we'll run it by the city staff and say, does this, you know, make sure you feel like this is the right approach.
Okay, so it's a calculation that's done by arch or?
Yeah, we, but it's always signed off by, by the director and with staff, but we'll usually do the legwork.
And is it, is it based on any publications or any statistics or?
We do research on local costs. So we try to do research on local costs, local land costs, and then we sometimes will refer to third-party reports. That have cost, you know, sort of general costs and stuff like.
So it's an internal, or it's an arch-driven kind of, it's not a published or a.
Correct.
Some kind of well-known reporter.
More localized, but sometimes we are using well-known reports to supplement what we're seeing. Especially for multifamily, we're seeing lots of projects come to us for funding. So we have a good feel for what multifamily costs are. Single family is a little different.
So how do we give a developer or a builder a good, a warm fuzzy that the planning director's not trying to get a little extra money out of them?
We've been willing to share our analysis with builders if they ask.
Okay.
And, and say, here are our assumptions. If you want to challenge them, kind of thing. So we'll always share the process with them if they'd like to see it.
Commissioner Hampton brought up that we should do a time check. It's a quarter to 10 right now. We, it seemed, we're very, very close to getting to the end of the more general aspects of this and we are already deferring this until, I think we're setting ourselves up for maybe a pretty short meeting on the 11th if I'm not mistaken. Would it be possible for us to finish reviewing this particular part of the section and then leave the chapter 1242 and 1244, which are the sub area parts of the code? For the next time, because I think some of the decisions that need to be, or some of the things you guys are going to research are going to, they will filter themselves out in those sections as well. Any, what are your thoughts?
I'm seeing nods. I, I think that's, that's a reasonable approach.
Okay.
Just want to see if there's.
Commissioners, are we okay to just finish up with this page that we're on, page six, and then pick up with the, the remainder of this following on May 11th? Is that okay?
If, if I could have a leading question when you're done with the general, because it does, there's something in the general that would help us, that might, will help us set up the.
Absolutely. Okay. That being said, any other questions on item, or page six? Any other comments or questions from the commission? None? Okay. So I guess that puts you on.
Okay.
You're up.
So for altern, so in your previous conversation, and this relates kind of to alternative compliance. Is that in your previous conversation for South Riverside, and I think we had a very similar conversation for Nike Hill. Is you had said, we would like, if there's more than 10 units, we want the units onsite provided. If it's less than 10 units, we automatically are saying it's okay for you to do a fractional alternative payment, in lieu payment as a choice. And if you feel that way, then what that means is we would write up the alternative, we would write up the local section to say. You only get to use alternative compliance in the following circumstance, that we're not opening it up to someone to propose something different. That in these two neighborhoods, that's the extent of alternative compliance is to fee in lieu for less than 10 units. And I'm pretty sure that's for, where you landed on South Riverside. And so that translates to how we then draft that look. If that's where you, if you agree that conceptually that's what you've talked about, then that affects how we do a little bit of drafting. If you want it to be open to other approaches, then, then we need to talk that through when we get to the neighborhood level.
Go ahead.
I don't know. My recollection is that's kind of what we discussed all along. We want to try to do what we can onsite. So for Shelton View, sub area Queensborough, we'd want to have them do anything onsite over 10 units.
Yes. I think. Consensus? I see a bunch of head nods, so.
I'm not sure I understood your question, Arthur.
So if, all I'm saying is if that's how you want to see the affordable provided in those two areas. We will do some drafting to say for those two areas, you don't get all the range of choices for alternative compliance.
Correct.
You just get the in lieu for less than 10 units.
You're trying to keep us from pushing this out to another meeting beyond the 11th.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, I think we, if everybody is in, I think.
Including the parking and all that stuff, right? I mean, then that's kind of the.
Yeah.
That part of it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that being said, we're gonna, we're gonna, well, I don't know that I'm exactly sure what we're going to do. I propose, suppose we're going to continue the public hearing, Dave, at this point to May 11th? Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's your prerogative. You've closed the public hearing on South Riverside. And so you could close the public hearing, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, we can close the public hearing, but still discuss this on the 11th. I think that's. If we've already done that on South Riverside, it seems like we'd be able to do that on the other two.
I think, oh, here we go. Sorry. I.
I believe that probably the best course would be to continue the public hearing because we're going to have some new language you're going to see and that gives the public an opportunity to react to that language. So, because we're doing the citywide language is my thought process.
But they would not, as it stands now, there is no more public input on the Riverside Drive portion?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so leave it open so that the, it affords the opportunity on the more general stuff? Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. And that, that gives the citywide language the ability for somebody to make comment on.
So we, would it be worthwhile to close the public hearing on the Riverside Drive?
You already have.
Or excuse me, close the hearing on the other two sub-areas and only keep the general open? Is that, would be, would be consistent, I suppose? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, just one thing to weigh in. As far as affordable housing is going, we've only had the one publicized meeting, and that was a study session where affordable housing was going to be the main topic. Every other time we've talked about it, it is just at the Shelton View sub-area or East Riverside Drive. So, A, I would like to amend the May docket so that, I guess there's notification to the city that we are talking about affordable housing. I know it's not the citywide element, but a lot of what we're deciding is going to be spread across the city. And so, B, I would want to keep it open just if, just for that conversation, if anyone wants to have it.
I, I agree. And, and I think, I found that in, in looking at the, at the, the schedule, which didn't really talk at all about affordable housing, I think it is worth mentioning publicly that that is the discussion. But we could, I guess what I'm getting at is we could leave the affordable housing, the general affordable housing discussion open, close the public hearing. The decisions around comp plan redesignations and zoning and that sort of thing have all been dealt with. We're going to deal with, take public comment on the general stuff. Is, does that make sense? I, I don't really care. I'm just trying to keep it consistent between the, the sub-areas. Okay. So I guess what we would need, if we are going to do that, is for somebody to propose a motion to continue the, let's see, continue the public hearing. Actually, we're to close the public hearing on the two sub-areas, the Nike, two Nike Hill sub-areas, and to continue the hearing for the general discussion of affordable housing. Is that an appropriate way to say that, or...
That, that would work.
So if somebody wants to craft a motion to that effect, we can do that. If not, we...
Yeah, don't look at me, man.
I don't think I can do that.
I don't know what you said.
I'll give this a shot, the new guy. I move that we close the public hearing on the Queensborough, Brentwood, Crystal Springs, and the Shelton View Meridian sub-areas, and we continue the public hearing on the general provisions for affordable housing.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, well, well done. Okay, so we are...
Yes, that's important. Let's verify that that's continued to May 11th.
Oh, okay.
Okay. To clarify, we're moving the public hearing on general provisions for affordable housing to the May 11th meeting.
So noted. You're 99% of the way there. So item five on the, on the agenda, we've just finished. Item six, no study session tonight, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Old business, 2015 docket of planning code amendments, code amendments for affordable housing.
And that was actually a misprint. But that's what it would, will read for May 11th, but that was supposed to be continued deliberations on the South Riverside plan and code amendments.
So we've decided we're going to wait till the 11th for that?
Right, but I do, I do want to, I have one thing. Since you have closed the hearing on, on those code amendments, we are not accepting comments, either public testimony at the hearings or, or written comments. We did receive some comments from Ann Agard today and, and, and those also went to city council members. We informed Ms. Agard that the hearing was closed and, and they wouldn't be presented to the planning commission. But she did ask, or that after an exchange, we agreed to provide you these comments as an item that will not be part of your deliberations, but it will accompany your recommendations to city council. So, so the, the comments will go to council and I'm going to provide them for your, for your benefit.
And that is allowed per protocol to add a, add an exhibit after the public hearing for the planning commission has been closed?
We're not adding an exhibit to your findings, but we're, we'll be forwarding this exhibit. And when city council opens up their hearings, they will accept new exhibits and this will be the first one on those exhibits. But Ms. Agard wanted to make sure that you had these and knew that these were going to, and, and we wanted to make, let you to be clear that they're going to city council along with your recommendations.
I'd love to have one. Commissioner, Kate?
Just for consistency, why did we get Mr. Feek's letter and not Ms. Agard's?
Because the Shelton View...
Oh, sorry, nevermind. Got it.
Okay, so that effectively means there is no old business. Reports from staff?
We do have one.
What? You did? What, is there something you want to say about this, Bruce, or is this...
Yeah, just very quickly, this is a memorandum from Planning Manager Hassler that tells you about the 2016 planning code amendment docket that the council recently approved. And it tells you about what the status of, the different amendments were and how they were parceled out. And you'll notice that the clustering provision has been added to the second half of this year. So we'll be working on that this year.
Congratulations, fellow commissioners.
Nice work, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. Is, is that it? We'll, we'll all read this on our own time, I suppose? Reports from members? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.